Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three.
C N O, are you ready? All right. I call this meeting Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors to order. Let's rise where you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll turn it over to the Assistant Township Manager, Ms. Progar, for the meeting procedures and roll call.
Thank you, Vice Chair Patterson. Thank you to the members of the board, staff and public for joining us this evening for the November 3 Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors regular meeting. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you were in attendance virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chair calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Members of the public attending using the WebEx platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the WebEx meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Mr. Thompson. Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Ms. Strickland.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Progar. We'll now move on to announcements and proclamations. There was an executive session today prior to this meeting on an H R matter. And I don't think there are any other announcements. We'll move on to public comment. We'll keep time five minutes per individual. And if there's anybody, we'll start in the room first.
Good evening. My name's Kayla Coral, Ferguson Township resident. Just real quick before I get started on my five minutes, does each agenda item have its own time or is this my time to shine for the entire agenda?
This public comment is with regard to items not on the agenda.
Okay, so then I will need to come back to you for the stuff on the agenda.
Awesome.
Thank you.
And thanks for that clarifying question, for anything that's not on the agenda, public comment. If there isn't anything in the room, anyone online? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to the approval of the minutes.
This is Patty motion to approve the October 21, 2025 minutes.
This is Lisa, I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. All right, reports and presentations. In our November diversity, equity, and inclusionary activities, we have a National Native American, American Indian and Native, Alaska Native Heritage Month. We have Dia deles Muertos. Already happened. Happy Halloween, everyone. And then International Day of Elimination of Violence Against Women at the end of this month. Does Jeremy really announce all these things? I can't remember.
Yeah, he does.
Okay. We have Clearwater Conservancy Slab Cabin Run Initiative. We have an official update on ag progress. Oh, wait, I mean, number two, what is it? Mr. Ryan Hamilton. Ah, there we go. Thank you, sir.
Hey, good evening. My name's Ryan Hamilton. I'm the Land Conservation Manager with Clearwater Conservancy. I don't know if we have a PowerPoint available. No? I apologize.
Have it in front of me. Do you have it on a...
Thanks so much. I really appreciate your time this evening. I work with Clearwater Conservancy. I'm our Land Conservation Manager. And this evening I wanted to just take a couple of minutes to quickly give you an update on Clearwater's Slab Cabin Run Initiative. And in particular, the Hess Farm Conservation Project that we're working on. Some obligatory background. Clearwater is a nonprofit land trust. I'm sure many of you are aware, but we've been working in the State College region since 1980. We've conserved over 12,000 acres in the region. We've completed over 26 miles of stream restoration projects and led over 7,000 events and educational excursions in the outdoors. Today, though, I'm excited to talk about the Slab Cabin Run watershed, which, thank you so much for the presentation, which is a sub watershed in the Spring Creek watershed. This has been sort of the heart of Clearwater's work for a long time. You can see sort of that brown tan area is the sub watershed. Ferguson Township is part of it. And the red highlighted parcel is the Hess Farm. If I go to the next slide, please. A little bit of history of the area. And to sort of orient us on the map, you can see State College Borough is sort of to the north at the top of the map. Rothrock State Forest and Tussie Mountain is the green to the bottom, to the south. The sort of black lines you can see there denote the municipal boundaries. So Ferguson Township is sort of to the bottom left quadrant there. The purple properties are those that the State College Borough Water Authority has purchased over time. These properties, you know, first purchased and started, this organization started providing public water in the late 1800s. They purchased additional properties over time. In the 1960s, they purchased properties and drilled wells known as the Harder and Thomas Well Field. These are the wells that continue today to provide public drinking water to our community. So this map starts to lay out the landscape area where water contributes to our drinking water wells. In 2008, the Borough Water Authority developed what they called the Source Water Protection Plan, sort of developing a designation of land uses and best management practices for protecting that water resource. In 2017, they updated that plan again and actually delineated zones, sort of what they called protection zones. The first is within a couple, you know, hundred feet, very close to the well, sort of zone one, the main protection area. Zone two is roughly represented by that sort of black and white outlined larger line on the map there. And that's the area where surface water actually is directed directly to the well. So the land area where that water falls to the ground and is directed to our well. And then zone three is where both the surface water and groundwater actually contribute to our drinking water well source. If we go to the next slide, please. So over the last 20, 25 years, Clearwater, municipal partners, the Water Authority, the County Ag Preservation Program, other nonprofit organizations, the State Bureau of Forestry, D C N R, with Rothrock State Forest, they got together and started developing a sort of landscape level conservation plan. And source water protection was really at the heart of this plan. Clearwater has designated that our Slab Cabin Run Initiative, and we've made a concerted effort over time to conserve land in that area, to do riparian projects, and work with all of the different partners that are making that work possible. The idea being that we can control both point and non-point source pollution if we permanently conserve some of these lands. And sort of also building on this idea that sort of an ounce of prevention now can be worth a pound of cure later. So we identified several conservation priorities. Of course, that zone two source water protection area, the productive agricultural lands that are found here, the woods and wildlife of Tussie Mountain, and then the exceptional value and high quality streams that are also in that area. If we can go to the next slide. But you can see this initiative is really a large landscape partnership. I sometimes refer to it as a conservation mosaic, where there are numerous partners working over time with numerous strategies to make this work possible. So you can see again the Borough Water Authority in purple. The blue is Penn State University lands. The sort of orange hatched is Whitehall Regional Park, Ferguson Township property. The sort of tan yellow properties, these are farms that have been conserved through the County Agricultural Preservation Program. And I want to point out it's not on the... ...zoning ordinances and regulations, like your forest zoning district and your ridge overlay district, which also contribute to protecting this drinking water source as well. And I also want to point out there are, you know, private landowners who are in this area who are implementing best practices, who are really doing things on their own to protect this drinking water source as well. Next slide, please. So you can see here we've added a number of Clearwater's projects over the years. That sort of teal color are conservation easements. The green that's been added to the south is what's now known as Musser Gap. This was property that was acquired by Clearwater and then transferred to the Bureau of Forestry to become part of Rothrock State Forest. And we start seeing the outlines on streams of some of our riparian projects as well. Again, this is a large partnership. There are many, many organizations doing this work in this region. Next step, slide, please. And then you can see here we've added Clearwater's projects for 2025 and 2026. In particular, that sort of green neon outline... In particular, that sort of green neon outline, you can see, these are properties that we've identified that are participating in our Woodland Stewardship Network, folks that are working to conserve their woods and implement best practices, especially along those streams and tributaries that are contributing directly to Slab Cabin Run. And then in yellow is the Hess Farm. This is our most recent project that we're working on. It's a 110-acre active beef cattle operation. It's actually in Harris Township. And it's been in the family for something like seven or eight generations. Next slide, please. So this farm, they've implemented many best management practices already. They've done everything from stream crossing and fencing to riparian buffers, rotational grazing. They've implemented a gravity flow water system and a new manure storage and heavy use area. Again, that, a lot of those projects weren't just the individual farmers implementing that, but numerous partners, like the Conservation District and others as well. Next slide, please. So we're excited to try to make this project not just about permanent land conservation and water resource protection, but we're also conducting a feasibility study on the property to try to better understand and evaluate potential methods that can be used to increase groundwater recharge opportunities. And we're also engaging in sort of an education and outreach campaign. That kicked off earlier this year. We toured the Slab Cabin area with the land trust, the State Land Trust Conference that was held in State College in the spring. Next slide, please. So projects like this can take quite a significant amount of funding, but we're proud to report that we've made very significant progress so far, and we're in kind of the last leg of our fundraising campaign. We've secured funding, federal and state funding, through the NRCS Regional Conservation Partnership Program. We've received a significant contribution through the Susquehanna River Basin Commission. This is the regional entity that sort of regulates water withdrawals and consumptions for our region, so this is significant. We've secured funds through private foundations and donors and the Hess family themselves. I'd like to actually ask Ferguson Township if they'd be willing to help contribute to this, but we don't need to discuss any details of that this evening. I can follow up. And in the meantime, last slide, please. I think it's just really important for us all to know that this type of effort is a long-term commitment, so we need to thank all of the local and regional decision-makers, like yourselves, that have made this kind of project possible. A landscape-level conservation plan like this doesn't come together without, you know, a concerted effort by multiple partners, multiple entities, over a very long period of time. So I think it's commendable, and we should be thankful that that's part of what makes our region so special. So I think there's opportunities for folks to get involved. And yeah, with that, I'll just say, thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Team, questions, comments?
No, just thank you for the work that you're doing. It's amazing, and you definitely reach out to staff.
And actually, if I may, 26 miles of restoration, did I hear?
Stream restoration projects over Clearwater's history.
That's a lot, especially in this area, so absolutely commendable, and I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask if we can get a copy of the PowerPoint. There are some great amounts on there.
I'd be glad to share.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nothing else? Appreciate it. Move on to Gen Item 5.3, informational update on the Ag Preservation Program and Support Farmland in Ferguson Township from 2023 to 2025 by Ms. Elizabeth Peroni Bruce.
Social group loves?
Oh, not good enough. Oh, man, I thought I nailed it.
Perone Bruce.
Perone? Oh, I know a Peroni, but they, but it's Perone.
Perone.
Here, with you, ma'am. Okay. Thank you. I know a Peroni and a Perone now. Is Mr. Ray Stalinas here as well? There, you're gonna go up. All right, sounds good.
Bear with us while we have some technical difficulties, guys. My name's Elizabeth. I am the Agricultural Land Conservation Coordinator for Center County, which means that I am the middleman between the farmer and the state only do conservation easements.
Wow.
And I have extra pamphlets if anyone would like a copy of what I just gave to the forum.
They've only gotten through one, one person so far. The first one was just someone explaining a project that a company they're doing on a stream restoration. If they didn't vote on it.
Mike D., Mike D., you have a hot mic. He was updating some folks. That's good. That's a good update. Thank you.
Oh, so I emailed you actually the PowerPoint itself. Or we can do it off the PDF, whatever.
We'll start with the PDF, and then we'll switch over. How's that sound?
Sounds perfect.
Awesome.
So, as I said, my name's Elizabeth. And I administer this program, so we can scroll down to the next page. The goals and objectives for Center County Agricultural Land Preservation Board, the CCALPB. Our goals and objectives are to administer a program for the purchase of agricultural conservation easements in accordance with Act 149. Act 149 amends the agricultural security area law, which provides for agricultural areas, public hearings, evaluation criteria, and decisions for proposed farms. We promote efforts to support the agricultural community in Center County, encourage the use of additional farmland preservation techniques through public and private organizations in Center County. The other organizations include Clearwater Conservancy, who we just heard from, Center County Farmland Trust, as well as the Western Pennsylvania Conservancy, and there are a few others that I'm sure I'm forgetting. Go ahead and next one. The purpose of the CCALPB, it was created by the Center County Commissioners August of 1989 to preserve farmland at the county level in conjunction with the state, occasionally municipal and federal. Fifteen agricultural security areas, also called ASAs, have been established with a total acreage of 85,000 acres. That's an important number because to qualify for the program, you have to be actively enrolled in an ASA. Countywide, there are 68 preserved farms through the Purchase Agricultural Conservation Easement Program, or PACE, totaling 9,462 acres that have been preserved to date with three farms, or just shy of 260 acres, in process, and 36 farms, or 4,400 acres, waiting. Okay? So, a little background. What is an ASA? A lot of people think that when you're enrolled in an ASA, you cannot build or subdivide at all, and that's not the case. They provide an incentive for farmers to make long-term commitment to farming. To form an ASA, there must be at least 250 acres that wish to enroll in the same municipality. This land can be farmland or woodland, as long as it's timber, and it will then be protected from local nuisance ordinances and other ordinances that would otherwise restrict farming activities. The purpose is to ultimately be able to apply for the PACE program. The landowner enrollment is entirely voluntary, as is the withdrawal. There are no restrictions placed on the land enrolled in an ASA outside of normal municipal ordinances such as zoning and subdivision. The landowner can sell, subdivide, or develop as outlined by their municipality. So, more specific, the Center County PACE Program. PACE stands for Purchase Agricultural Conservation Easement. The Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture contributes monies each year. The amount is calculated by farm yields, size of farms, and prevalence of preservation. Once closing has occurred, the property has been used in perpetuity. To be eligible for the PACE program, properties must be enrolled in an ASA, at least 10 acres of tillable land and adjacent to a preserved property or growing specialty crops, greater than 50% of the crop land if woodland is not being donated, and have a conservation plan through Natural Resources Conservation Service by the closing date. So what are impacts on the farms that are enrolled in the PACE program? Farms enrolled in the PACE program retain a deed of conservation easement to their property. They are still subject to the municipal regulations. They do have a few ancillary allowances. They can build one additional residence. They can perform one residential subdivision, not to exceed two acres. And they can perform one general subdivision, which would be greater than 10 acres, as long as any of these are allowed by their municipality. The restrictions imposed are, there cannot be any new right-of-waste other than utilities, and they can never develop their property, aside from that one additional house. So, the funding for my program is interesting, to say the least. First, I have two sources of local funds. The most impactful is the municipal or local government unit, which we will talk about more later. This is taken into consideration when a farm is advanced and the municipality would like to support the preservation of the property. The municipality is also then the holder of the easement. It's usually dictated by the municipality, and if they have monies available, to contribute. Second is the county funding. At this time, the county allocates $80,000 to farmland preservation, and we also receive some of the planning green rollback taxes. We don't like to see land taken out of planning green, but when it is, PACE benefits through the landowner paying rollback taxes. This year, we received just over $27,000. The $80,000 is used to contribute approximately $30,000 to each farm. This helps us to extend our spending power. Okay? The non-local funds. The third funding source is state funding. The state has a formula to calculate the dollar amount each county receives based on how they allocate. Available funds are decided by many factors. That includes tobacco purchases, average size of farms, number of farms on the waitlist, average appraisal value, National Agricultural Statistics Service, also called NASS, and allocated funds at the county level. So the more funds the county and municipalities contribute, the more funds we are likely to receive from Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture. The fourth and final funding is from the federal level. It is a reimbursement to the county. This is a very large pot of money that all counties have access to. It is first come, first served. Once that money is spent, it's gone. They, the farm must meet NRCS criteria and be willing to go through a slightly longer and more complex process, and the county receives up to 50% of the preservation amount back into their state fund. So this map, anything that is green on the screen is an agricultural security area. Anything that is red is a Center County PACE property. On that, you also have the open space properties, the Clearwater properties, and the Center County Farmland Trust properties. If you look at Ferguson Township, go ahead and scroll down for me, please. There's a lot of red, which is great. That means that Ferguson Township has been so active in telling people about the PACE program, encouraging farmers to become enrolled, helping fund these properties. Without their contribution, we could not have preserved all of these farms. And there's another one yet to come, should be going to closing early next year. So, my major's based in science, so I'm sorry that I'm going to subject everyone to a couple of graphs now. This graph is simply an overview of all of the data by municipality. That is, the total acres that are, have been eased, the total eased acres, total acres from 2021 to present, and the total purchased acres from 21 to present. The reason we started in 21 is our first farm was preserved in 1990, so all of my, I'm sorry, 91, all of my data runs 91 to 20, or to 2000, 2001 to 2010. So this is just the most recent data source. So first, if we look at the total acres that are technically held by PACE, and looking at it by municipality, you can see that Ferguson Township leads the way with 5,121 acres in the PACE program. The next highest is Potter, and that's at 1,554 acres. Ferguson Township is more than four times that. The total eased acreage in the PACE by municipality, Ferguson Township comes in at 4,385. The difference between those two numbers is when a property enters my program, they can choose to donate or exclude woodland. The donated or excluded property was included in that first number and not the second number. So going from 5,100 down to 4,300 means there's only 100 acres that have been donated or excluded, which is a spectacular thing to see. So, this is total acreage, I believe, 21 to present, and we can see that Ferguson Township since 2021 has eased, has eased 2,000 acres. And the next highest one is Half Moon Township with 250 acres. We can see that a couple of them, four of them, have zero since 2021. Last graph, comments. This is the total purchase acreage. So this is again differentiating between the donated excluded woodland and what we have paid money for. And Ferguson Township has 649 acres, and the next highest is 181, again, in Half Moon Township. So all of that's leading up to what has happened in my program in Ferguson Township specifically since 2023. In 23, three farms in Ferguson Township were preserved, and they totaled 194 acres. Ferguson Township contributed 2,500 acres. In 2024, there was one farm totaling 120 acres, and Ferguson Township contributed just shy of $12,000. This year, there has been one farm, and again, Ferguson Township contributed $11,000. In 2026, there is one farm to be closed on, totaling 63 acres, and Ferguson Township is going to contribute $6,373. Since 1999, when Ferguson Township began contributing to the preservation effort, Ferguson Township has contributed $545,000, which is a sum. Ferguson Township has contributed five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which is astonishing. There are thirty-eight preserved farms in Ferguson Township, and the total money spent on preserved farms in Ferguson Township comes to twelve million dollars. This is showing the upcoming properties in Ferguson Township that includes the Kevin and Regina Michaels, the Marion Sheridan, Amanda Rockhour, Paula and Paul Johnston, Robert and Paul Starks, the Ryder Farm, and David Burgett Living Trust. Just to show where they are in township. If you found this to be an interesting discussion and would like to learn more, there is an interactive web app that is included in this PowerPoint. Please feel free to explore it. My board currently has a vacancy. We're going to be meeting at six-thirty, the fourth Thursday of every month starting in January. Currently, it's a seven-thirty meeting. My information is on the screen. I have business cards with me and more off the pamphlets if anyone is interested. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Heller.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. And I just wanted maybe a little clarity around understanding how land can be developed up to two acres, because wouldn't that take it out of the ASA technically because it's then all of a sudden developed land? Help me understand maybe the relationship between the state saying ASA means this, and now the county is saying, but we come in, and now do we supersede? Again, I'm trying to understand.
Sure, sure. So, a great example, actually, from Ferguson Township is the sheets right here. It's still technically in an ASA, because it has to be voluntarily removed by the landowner. It does not say anywhere actually in the ASA law that they cannot be developed. And that two acres that you're referencing is specifically for one house. Once they're in my program, they may go one house, and their lot may not exceed that two acres. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, thanks so much for the presentation. I'll look forward to it.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I have two questions. Number one, you mentioned earlier something like four thousand acres that are kind of waiting to go through the process. Is that just from a funding perspective? We couldn't just do all of them up? It's kind of, we've got to chunk it up each year?
Yeah, that is, we, because of the funding sources and the monies we receive, we can really only do two to three farms on a good year. So unfortunately, or fortunately, we keep getting new applicants, and it's a ranked list. So if a higher score comes in, the people who are lower on the list never actually move up, which is how we end up accumulating so many properties. If there was more funding, we could certainly move more farms forward, but I think everyone is in that boat.
What's in that scoring? Just curious.
So that includes the land evaluation, which is the soil score, how good the soils is. It needs to be a minimum of fifty percent, class one through four. The development potential, which is, is there water and sewer already going near there? What is the risk of it becoming rezoned and developed? The cluster potential, which is how close it is to other preserved properties and ASA. And I think that's it. I think it's those three big categories, and I feel like I'm missing the fourth one, but it'll come to me at about 2:00 AM.
Well, those three are very helpful. And then the second question I had was just on the funding side. Wasn't quite kind of getting the, I think it's the fourth one, the federal dollars, where county receives fifty percent back? Is that from the feds?
Yes, yes.
Because to the county or the state, or?
Right, so my funding, the county has eighty thousand plus for clean and green. We have whatever the state contributes this year. We started out at about half a million dollars. And then we received federal monies, and that took us up to almost a million dollars. To receive federal money, they have to meet the NRCS regulations. We have to front that money. So that comes out of the county, the state, the municipality pocket. And then about a year and a half later, because we have now gone through a higher standard, the federal government sends us a check to put back in a separate bucket with our name on it, basically, to be used specifically by us. Because if we don't use our state money in two years, it goes back to the general population and is disbursed.
Copy. Two more questions.
Yep.
Number one, state and federal dollars, are you doing okay with those for twenty-five, for five? How are you doing for twenty-six, perhaps?
We don't know yet. That's, that's to be, because Pennsylvania hasn't passed their budget yet, I frequently don't know what my twenty-six money is until February of twenty-six.
Okay, fed, federal dollars?
I, I'm only two years into my position, so I haven't tried to do a federal farm yet. I will find out in January how that bucket looks, because I'm hoping to get one of those under my hat.
Okay.
So I don't know. The short answer is I don't.
All right, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
All right, moving on to Authorities, Boards, and Commissions Report. We'll have State College Borough Water Authority Liaison Report by Mr. Ford Stryker. You're on twice. You have two devices on, one of them you've got to mute, the speakers, I think.
Oh, he might have joined twice. Sometimes WebEx will cover up one of the screens. Yeah, so, I'm sorry, you might want to let him know that.
He may have heard you.
Yeah, Mr. Stryker, if I may, sometimes WebEx will cover up, be covered up by another screen. If you might want to move around some of your, your windows there, there's probably one hiding.
Can you kick out the top right one, James?
I can't sing it out.
Oh, that's weird.
I'm afraid.
All right, perhaps we can come back to you after you've resolved the technical difficulties. Let's move, go ahead. Yeah, we'll come, we'll come back. COG and Regional Committee reports parks and recreation governance committee. Yes.
I have, yes, I have nothing to report there, other than, I think, as you heard at General Forum, we are putting together something that will be coming to each municipality and their boards and the managers to look at. So, again, it's just a work in progress.
Very good. And I see Mr. Stryker's down to one device or one, one picture up. Want to try again? All right, we'll press on as he goes to continue troubleshooting. We're going on unfinished business. Number one, authorization to advertise for a public hearing on an ordinance to establish a special fire protection tax under authority of the Second Class Township Code, providing for the levy and collection of said tax, creating a restricted fund, and designating the purposes for which such revenue shall be used as part of the township's transition from hydrant assessments and review of alternative tax structures. I'll turn it over to manager for, there.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So provided with the agenda is a pretty lengthy detailed narrative. It outlines the special fire protection tax ordinance that was drafted and presented to the Board at the October 7th meeting and discussed at the following two special meetings that discuss the budget. It also integrates a approach the Board may want to consider in terms of the consideration for crediting the fire hydrant tax parcels, understanding that approximately forty-seven hundred tax parcels receive an invoice from the township to pay the fire hydrant fees, which is approximately eighty, eighty-some percent of our total tax properties. And so the approach here for the Board's consideration is that the ordinance would only enact a one mil increase for the special fire protection tax in 2026 fiscal operating budget, recognizing that for all of the fire protection expenditures totaling approximately a hundred and eight, not, a hundred and eight, nine, excuse me, eight hundred and nine thousand dollars, which is our contribution to the Center Region Council of Governments for the Alpha Fire Protection Services, as well as our contributions that we make to the other firefighting companies, Port Matilda, Warriors Mark, et cetera. That totals about eight hundred, eight hundred and nine thousand dollars. So the approach for the alternative tax structure evaluation suggested by the Board in terms of enumerating the tax parcels that were assessed, the fire hydrant fee, which leads to approximately a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars in surplus for that fund, would be applied to the remaining amount of dollars in the 2026 fiscal operating budget, as opposed to taking a much more administrative burden approach, which would be to figure out what a credit would look like for each individual tax parcel, and would ultimately involve the expertise of an auditor, as well as legal, just to ensure that that would be done carefully and appropriately. And so in collaboration with Todd Grady, our Finance Tax Director, largely his idea, we were able to provide this approach for the Board's consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, provided with the agenda is an approach for the Board's consideration on trying to find a balanced budget. I'll just note that prior to this year, the township had not increased taxes in over twenty years. And as our infrastructure continues to grow, such as our traffic signals, stormwater piping, all of the assets and infrastructure that are required to maintain the municipal service delivery that we have in Ferguson Township, those expenditures increase, including with inflation, salaries, and the cost for contracts to be able to do our road repairs, et cetera. So recognizing that those expenditures are increasing, but our sources of revenue are not, this is one approach for the Board's consideration, following your discussion at the previous special meetings that focused primarily on the budget. Happy to answer any questions, myself or Todd Grady.
I think what I'll do is we'll do some board questions, comments, maybe some public feedback, and then we'll understand a motion. Any objections to that? Sounds good. We'll start with Board, Mr. Heller.
Yes, if I may, and I appreciate having an option here, but my question is this, or at least my concern, if I may. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like we collected one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars approximately from a subset of our residents because of their proximity to fire hydrants. Is that correct?
That is correct. Per the ordinance, the township has been, has established a Fund II, Fire Hydrant Fund, which is per ordinance, which is also what the Board took a motion to have repealed, which will be at your next meeting. And as a part of that particular section of the ordinance that is going to be repealed, it does require an assessment of the approximately forty-seven hundred tax parcels that are within proximity of, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, seven hundred and eighty feet of the frontage of the home for the fire hydrant location.
Okay, so thank you for confirming that. So my concern then is, is that we have a subset of the township that has paid into the hydrants. And now, all of a sudden, the money they paid in will not be used for that, but actually spread out now across the entire township, and the money going to COG and other fire protection entities.
I, I would say yes and no, right? So what we're doing is we're establishing a special fire protection tax that will cover for all of our fire protection expenditures. And included in that is also the maintenance and equipment for our fire hydrant fees. And that particular fee has previously been in our dedicated fire hydrant fees solely. So it's a separate fund, whereas that paid the State College Borough Water Authority for the fee that the township is administered per the invoice on a quarterly basis. And then out of our general fund, we've paid our COG contribution for our fire protection services. And that is primarily one of the drivers in why the special fire protection tax is being proposed as an alternative solution to the expenditures. As you all are aware, or perhaps may recall, the Alpha Fire Company had done a study. And as part of that study for a, I believe, a five to ten-year outlook, was recognizing that in order to sustain the services provided through COG, that they would need to transition to a hybrid staffing model. So we would need to start paying for those firefighters. And that has, we've seen for Ferguson Township, and I'm not going to say the exact precise dollar, but we can certainly pull it up, our contribution in just the last fiscal year went up about approximately two hundred thousand dollars. And we're anticipating that continuing to increase over the next five years as we transition into a paid fire service. So with that in mind, the benefit of a special, special protection, that's not coming out right, a special fire protections or fire protection tax, is that per legislation in the Second Class Code, and while we are Home Rule Charter, we are still incorporated in eighteen oh one as a second-class township. So we would be required to establish a very transparent approach to collecting the fee under the special fire protection tax and tracking those dollars so you could see if, looking at the township's budget, exactly where those dollars are going. So for example, what we used to pay out of the fire hydrant to the State College Borough Water Authority for those fire hydrants now get combined into this total expenditures of what we pay for all of our fire protection taxes, not, or, excuse me, expenditures, not just the fire hydrants, but our equipment, our maintenance, our infrastructure, and our services to COG. Or, excuse me, our contribution for services to COG.
And again, I appreciate, that's the full context. I'm still on the fence, and, no, I'm not on the fence. This just doesn't sit right for me. I think the one ninety-two and change should be returned first back through whatever auditing magic, or however we do that, to the folks that have paid into it. And then we see where that gets us and consider this, this one mil increase, et cetera. But I would like to see the money first returned to those that paid into a portion of it.
So I would like to clarify, if that fund, the fire hydrant, was still established, those dollars would still be paying toward specifically the fire hydrant fee that we would pay to the State College Borough Water Authority. So it's all going to be transferred in and utilized in the same fashion as it was prior. Only one fund will hold all of the dollars collected, and the surplus will transfer. In fact, it's not actually going to be a transfer. What it actually is, is we're going to take that fund too, and we're going to rename it from fire hydrant to the special fire protection tax. So those dollars are still going toward our fee that we have to pay the State College Borough Water Authority for the hydrant. And the surplus is then also going towards, you know, the fee for the fire hydrant, as well as fire protection expenditures, such as our contribution to COG. I'll also note, part of our surplus too, for what it's worth, is a result of us, this administration identified that we had been paying the State College Borough Water Authority for approximately three hundred and two fire hydrants. And we recognized that the numbers didn't entirely show some consistency over time, so we requested that a manual inventory be done. And part of that, we realized that we were paying for approximately seventy to eighty fire hydrants that were not on the books. And so State College Borough Water Authority issued a check to Ferguson Township, which is in part what's creating that surplus.
Yeah, so if I may, and it might be, might be beneficial that when this comes before, that we see a bit of a breakdown, a visualization, as to this money was collected, it was split into four different buckets, this one was moved three times, twice removed this way. It's very complicated, and I'm glad that you understand it, but I don't know if I understand it, and I'm not sure if others do as well.
I understand that, and we certainly can try to put some parameters together for that review. I will share with the Board that in order for this to be aligned with the adoption of the budget, we would need to advertise and have this in front of the Board. And I'm, I'm just realistically acknowledging, I'm not sure that the time constraints will allow for us to do that prior to the Board needing to take. allow for us to do that prior to the board needing to take action. We can still work to present that, but I'm not sure that it'll happen prior to the legal advertisements that have to be administered in time for the adoption of the ordinance and the budget.
And I'm, and I appreciate that. I was looking at that as essentially the appendix to this, this hearing, so it would be included in the public hearing. So it would just match everything, it would just be provided at this time, that we're about to...
I, I, we certainly would work towards trying to meet that timeline. I'm not sure that we'll be able to get with, ensuring that the staff, I couldn't commit that it would be done in time for that public hearing, but it, we can commit to having it presented to the board at the earliest possible time.
Mr. Heller, if I may, maybe think about the way you want to craft a motion that kind of gets you what you need, while also recognizing that, that staff's going to have to do some, some, some work to get you what you need, and so, you know, what motion you might want to craft, that strikes that balance. Any more questions?
No.
Okay. Mr. Stevens?
No, my only comments would be that I, I appreciate your explanation, and in my mind, I am following exactly what you're saying, and I appreciate that Mr. Heller thinks money should be returned, but, so even if you had that pool of money, that hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand or whatever it is, if I heard you correctly, we would have to pay an auditor, so that money would have to come out of there, we would have to pay the time, so that, so that hundred-and-ninety-two then keeps getting reduced and reduced, was opposed, it could be part of a fire protection program that we're ultimately going to have to pay anyway. So to me, it makes sense to follow staff instruction and just do what we're going to do.
That is correct. We would definitely engage the services of an auditor, just to ensure and avoid an observation or findings, because that's not something that we do every day. And so we would then, of course, make sure that all the language was appropriately stated in such a way that was, you know, plain and easy to follow, but also had the disclaimers that, you know, legally we would need to have, which also contributes to the timeframe, right? Understanding that we're nearing a holiday in the, in the next couple of weeks, so it's not something that I'm suggesting we can't do, I'm just acknowledging realistically a timeframe within when we need to enact the, the budget could, could create some constraints.
Sure.
Mr. Stevens?
I think what you've presented answered a lot of my questions, and so I was interested in knowing a little bit more about what's currently in the hydrant fund, as far as payments in, and whatever reimbursement we've gotten from the inactive hydrant, so I appreciate that, and then whatever, you know, you were able to provide as far as that. But I, I think I'm following the, the evolution of the fund, so it will include that, the hydrant fee, the reimbursement, that will still contribute to the, to that same effort it had been before, so. Nothing else at this time, but probably later, or at the hearing.
I will entertain any public comment. Mr. Gleeb online, looks like?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Well, I came to two focus groups, pre-will, the hydrants and the lakes, and seemed to be a lot of confusion about commercial properties wouldn't pay the hydrant assessment. My nine neighborhood is loaded with commercial properties. Has that ever been resolved?
My manager, I, I would like that question answered, but I guess I can wait until later.
It's a great question. I'll start off by giving kind of a preamble, and I'll look to the assistant manager to, to provide any additional detail. So you wouldn't find that in the actual ordinance, and it's in fact this observation that led, led us to wanting to form an ad hoc committee internally and do this assessment, which led to, you know, the inventory of the State College Borough Water Authority, as well as, as this essentially situation that we're in. To answer the question, we have a, a practice here at the township, a longstanding practice long before, you know, staff here at this time, where we, it's clear in the ordinance that we've always assessed the frontage of seven-hundred-and-eighty feet of what the location of the hydrant for residential properties. However, for commercial properties, we do not do an assessment for the commercial property owners, which again, in part is what flagged, what, what allowed staff to kind of flag and realize there's a potential equity matter here, and so we, we dove a little deeper and realized that while there was some reasoning behind it, that I'm sure made sense twenty-five years ago when this fire hydrant ordinance was enacted, it doesn't make, it, it just calls into question to see how we might be able to more effectively and efficiently administer the assessment. So that, so I'll look to James to see if he would like to add a little bit more detail as to the assessment of commercial properties in the fire hydrants.
Thanks. So it's not so much a designation of a property being commercial or not being commercial, it's more what type of fire protection do they have? So more commercial properties have their own private internal fire suppression systems. Typically, you see a standpipe, they might have a sprinkler system, they might have a number of different types of apparatuses, that they pay their own fee directly to State College Borough Water Authority to, for that service. So in practice, they were, historically, they were removed from the data set where the fee was assessed. It's, gets pretty, it got pretty difficult, because there was no, as the manager mentioned, there's no language in the ordinance itself that describes that particular situation and how that should be applied. It says all property within this radius should be included in the assessment, but that historically wasn't how the assessment had been done. And then to differentiate between which properties were served by a private system versus which ones were not, again, more often you see that with commercial properties, but that's not always the case. And so it's very, it became a very, it's a very challenging situation to determine if a parcel, if a particular parcel is supposed to be in the assessment or not, because it took a little bit of extra knowledge in working with State College Borough Water Authority and trying to make sure that we were keeping records of all the fire systems, when really that's all being done by code. So there's a lot of triangulation to come at a, at a data set that would allow us to accurately and successfully administer that, that fee. So that's really where we came at it from, was putting a lot of, a lot of juice into this one to sort through everything, so.
To create a system, because historically, it wasn't created to administer the commercial properties. Yeah.
Well, when I, when I walked around my area, the new house apartment building has an external fire department connection, and the building, we call it the Veronese Building, it's the one down in the low part of College Avenue, across from the barber salon and the new bike shop, they have an external fire connection. If you don't have an external fire connection, you don't, you don't have any special service, you're still going to need to use hydrants.
Thank you. Anyone else online? And in the room one more time?
The budget document is not overly citizen-friendly, okay? You guys and the staff have to work with it, but for an average citizen to pick that document up, it's not overly friendly. So with that in mind, this may be a question that, that is obvious to everybody else. Currently, our general fund pays for the allocation that COG assigns to the Alpha Fire Company, and we use a fire hydrant fee system to pay the water authority. The tax that's being suggested will lump the two together and be specific to fire safety. Will the general fund allocation in the budget be reduced by the amount we collect for the fire tax? Or am I going to pay twice? Once for the fire tax, and then once to replace the general fund money that, that is not going to be, I don't understand that particular situation.
Anything else?
No.
Because I have an answer, I just want to make sure there weren't two questions.
No.
Okay. So this is actually a couple of things that I had, and you feel free to sit or stay, but I had a couple of, as I was rationalizing how this was going to work, last year, when we raised taxes, we raised them specifically for the increase in fire and the increase in police costs. We specifically did it for that reason, and I think that's why it wasn't an issue, and why everybody was okay with it, because we did it for specifically those two reasons. And so the police costs that were increased last year didn't, didn't decrease this year, and the fire cost didn't decrease this year. However, I do, I don't agree writ large that we should not kind of reduce by at least that amount in that prior general fund. So that's just my opinion, and something, just to give you some, some context of where my brain is going, in that it, at the very least, that amount, I think it was three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand for police and fifty thousand for the additional on COG for fire, and so at the minimum, that fifty thousand should not, we should decrease the, some other revenue stream by at least fifty thousand as we implement this. But as Madam Manager just already said, costs haven't come down. Like writ large, they have not come down, and I think as you'll see in another agenda item, costs are not coming down in one of the other agenda items. So it's not paying twice, I would, I would probably disagree with the way you said, are we paying twice? No, we're paying once across the board, and just costs are up elsewhere, and so we can't come down there. We have been kicking the can down the road for years on capital, we've been probably spending a bit too much on capital projects, and they're, they're not stopping, and at least the last couple of years, we've kind of been pushing out capital projects in order to kind of stay on budget. But I will just say that we, we, if you look at the CIP, it's, it's going to be massive in a couple of years, and we need to avoid that cliff.
I'm just, I, I understand some of what you indicated, the reference to the, the police and the fire tax situation previously, I haven't got that in my brain as, as impacting on this issue.
It's, so taxes were raised last year.
Right.
Roughly three-hundred-and-eighty thousand, if I recall correctly, and Madam Manager kicked me if I'm the wrong, wrong number, but it's roughly that amount.
Was that the real estate?
That's right. That was the real estate, transfer tax increase, and the property tax increase, but those two things increased last year. And so what I'm saying, when you ask about kind of decreasing the general fund in the same amount as that other thing, the amount necessary for fire protection, fire hydrants, all things fire, will now be a very transparent and dedicated amount.
The whole is where, what I'm concerned about, because now there will be money that's not in the general fund, and I'm wondering what that amount is, and is the general fund going to be reduced by that amount?
Largely, the answer is no.
Okay. I think that, I think that needs to be, I think that needs to be part of the discussion.
Supervisor Patterson, if you don't mind.
Sure, please.
So, so essentially, what the, what the special fire protection tax does is it's actually redirecting how revenues are collected and used, right? So it's take, it's alleviating, if you will, the strain of the general fund, and it's going to move it into a dedicated fund, right? So we're going to collect specific fund, and so much what Supervisor Patterson was saying, that the, the goal behind the tax increase last year, as largely discussed, was focused on saying this is going to help assist in the increases in expenditures that we're having primarily related to public safety. The fundamental difference between what we did last year and, and what we're proposing for the board to take formal action on this, this evening, is that we're required by law to maintain a dedicated stream of funding and how it's being used in a transparent way. And so both goals are ultimately, you know, prioritized as we're dedicating funds, or excuse me, collection of taxes to, to say this is going to be largely to support an increase in public safety. Specific to fire protection, we have to, by law, you will see in our, in next year's budget, Fund Two, Fire Protection Services. It will report all of the collected revenue, and it will show you in that same fund where those expenditures are being allocated. For example, our payment to State College Borough Water Authority for all the fire hydrants. Second example, our contributions to COG. Third example, our contributions to Warriors Mark Fire Company, Port Matilda Fire Company. Those line items within expenditures in the dedicated fund, by law, we have to report how the dollars coming in are paying for, the dollars going out, specific to fire protection services, and limited to what we're allowed to use those funds by law. For example, training, equipment, infrastructure, all specific to fire protection services. So in part, the ease, or perceived ease, when you have to, as a municipality, consider alternative sources for increasing revenue, is that we are required by law to dedicate a fund and show tran, in a transparent way, what we're doing with those dollars. To answer your question very specifically, in the general fund today, in the, in the 2025 fiscal annual operating budget, you will see a line item for an expenditure of approximately four-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars going out to pay for the COG fire protection services in the general fund. Then you have to go into the fire hydrant fund to see the expenditures related specific to fire hydrants. When we create the Fund Two and use that as the special fire protection service tax, we're going to report all the revenue, all the expenditures. That line item in general fund, specific to that COG contribution, is removed, because you will only see all fire protection incoming revenue and expenditures in that specific fund. So if, understanding your question correctly, no, you won't pay twice, you're paying once, and the benefit is every taxpayer will see exactly where those dollars are and where they're going in that particular fund.
That helps. But when I then think about the proposed budget for 2026, 2027, it's not, it's not obvious what you've explained, and that's part of, I guess, my concern with regard to one of the nineteen-thousand people who write a check to you guys every year. It's not obvious to us, and we've got to do a much better way of dealing with that as opposed to saying tax increase, fire safety, end of conversation, because we need to be able to track the fact that this piece is being taken out of the general fund, as, as Manager Martin has indicated, and, and showing in your budget where that happens. So it would be a, a negative number in, in, in the general fund? I don't know how you would do it, but you got to show... I don't know how you would do it, but you got to show us that that's really happening, because otherwise it just appears to be a shell game of moving dollars around, and I'm paying twice for it.
I appreciate it. Thank you. So we can hit that in the budget as well. But at this time, we went board public, I entertain a motion to pursue the special fire tax with a commensurate decrease by 130K. Someone's willing to make that motion?
I have a motion here. You said 130K. I was actually referring to 192. I'll read this. The Board of Supervisors moved to authorize for legal advertisement to hold a public hearing on ordinance to establish a special fire protection tax and present in writing how the approximately 192,515 dollars and 50 cents came to be and how it will evolve and be dispersed to what funds with this potential ordinance.
Is there a second?
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Discussion? Yeah, I'm okay. I'll make it. Ms. Stevens, anything?
No.
Ms. Strickland?
I appreciate how you worded the motion, because I think that makes it clear, just to kind of separate those things out. And then I really appreciate it, the public comment, so that we can see where those particular line items. I'm looking at the proposed budgets, CR COG fire contributions, you're at 1,400-411. So you're seeing those line items and how they'll move over. And that'll just help for next year, too, as everybody's kind of, you know, we are constantly comparing numbers year over year. And so we'll be able to really quickly call back to the previous line items. So I think that would be helpful.
No, I agree with the statements, because I think it's important, since they were allocated into a general fund with particular uses, that there should be a decrease or something there, because where else would an increase come from to offset? So I think this is all ripe for our conversation at the public hearing.
As someone who lives right next to a fire hydrant and has talked to some neighbors, that money's gone. We've been paying this for years. And we went through this with the stormwater fee. And that was like the defining moment, when I saw that we were spending 30, 40, 50,000 dollars a year, whatever the number was, administering that fee. And so we might see the same thing from administering and auditing and all of those stuff. It's almost like, let it go. The biggest thanks and appreciation is for everybody to contribute now versus just the people within a certain radius. And going forward, no longer having to pay this. So I'm fine with some sort of maybe quick, you know, brush here, but whatever I paid, I didn't know what I paid. It's kind of like, it's gone. I already paid it.
And that's you and the neighbors, and I think there are other opinions that would...
You've heard some more. Okay, all good. Now, with the 130K that I mentioned, we have, and we have the fire protection tax, which, there are a couple of options there. There's the 1.0, and there's the 1.3. What I'm suggesting is that the fire protection tax go to 1.3, because that is specifically encompassing all things fire. And so that'll get us to the 809, that it covers all the fire things, the donations here and there. It's all one place, the 809. Do the 1.3, and then the delta between the 660 that we had talked about last meeting and the 809 is 130. So I'm suggesting that we have 130 from the general fund as per normal, but the other 660 be from from this new basket, if you will.
Could you sketch that out, too?
I mean, I've got like three numbers on a page.
I guess, but I also remember a presentation Mike Tilke did over at COG, which Finance Committee was, I would say, not deadlocked, but could have used some, it was Climate Action, could use some clarity. And he presented how money moved down a chain in hierarchy and then was split. And it was definitely eye-opening for a lot of folks to see that. So again, I offer that I think we need to be, we are being transparent, but we need to be communicative and be able to communicate these things clearly.
Your motion as stated right now just says do it, and tell me what you're doing with the 192. And so what is it? There's no it here in your motion right now.
No, no. So do we want to go ahead and shoot down that motion and have?
No, I would, my recommendation as chair is just to move to amend with perhaps the it. We vote on that amendment, then we vote on the main motion.
What's your suggested amendment?
So that's, original motion was to move forward the special fire protection tax period. And so, I'm sorry.
Public hearing.
Sorry, public hearing for the tax.
I'm not approving a tax.
Got it, got it. So the public hearing, but it's for what? And I think it's for the 1.3. So that would be the amendment to add the 1.3 to it, if you wanted to. I'm just the chair. I can only facilitate. And if you don't, we can vote.
And I just want to acknowledge, and perhaps the board already realizes this, what's being proposed is in the fiscal year of 2026, just a 1 mil increase, and then subsequent years would be 1.3. And that's where that 192,000 dollars gets applied to offset that 0.3. So that 0.3 mil is equivalent to approximately 190,000 dollars. And we can't transfer anything out of that fund back to general fund, just for clarification. I may have misheard that, but I just wanted to clarify.
That was my understanding.
Once we assess and collect that revenue into that dedicated fund, we can't take it out.
So I was satisfied with the proposal presented of the 1 mil and using the existing balance in the hydrant fund for '26.
All right. That's why I love this democratic process, where all people are, you guys, the board has spoken. It's been properly moved and seconded. All those, all discussions complete? Good?
Good.
Okay. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson, welcome. Aye. Opposed, do so by the same. Motion carries. Moving to the next agenda item, which is the authorization for advertisement of a public hearing on the Ferguson Township Draft 2026 Annual Operating Budget.
I think my mic's working, by the way.
Oh, it's Ford Stricker, maybe?
All right, we will get you just before the new business. Does that sound okay? All right, great.
Sure.
And I'll hand it off to Madam Manager for the narrative.
Thank you. So presented here this evening is a request for the board's consideration to authorize for advertisement of a public hearing to adopt the Ferguson Township Draft 2026 Annual Operating Budget. The township was fortunate to receive some public input. That public input is provided as an attachment for the board's consideration. And part of the township's response also looked at closely, in response to public feedback, the earned income tax. So there were some general assumptions that have to be made, because you really can't, there's no magic, there's no magic model that really says that your municipality is going to collect X number of earned income dollars. But what we have set up as a system is to look over maybe a 10-year period. And you'll see that the, just the swings over a 10-year period, I think one year in 2021, don't quote me on that, but the information is in your packet. We saw 18.4% increase in earned income, whereas other years we saw it decrease down to, I think there was a negative 1 or 2%. Finance Director's looking at me, so that may be wrongly stated. Maybe it wasn't negative, maybe it was just as low as 2%. Oh, it is negative, okay. And so, you know, I just want to bring to your attention that that feedback is certainly useful. I think having those perspectives are important. Ultimately, there's no magic model. Residents move out of the township, residents move into the township, and based on where their employment is, ultimately determines what the collective total of earned income revenue the township's going to receive. We're fortunate to have professional staff, particularly here, our Finance Director, who looks over a 10-year period and makes a evidence-based decision as to what assumptions to apply to earned income tax. It's not perfect. We're not going to get it exact, but it is what's provided in the budget. But I just wanted to be transparent that we do appreciate the feedback, and that feedback, particularly ones that we received via email, is part of the agenda packet for your consideration. I'll also note that when the budget was presented in a proposed format from the manager, we did not have health costs included, exact health costs included. We just provided what we were told, which is to expect approximately no higher than 25% increase. Those numbers have come back to us at a 17% increase. And so those actual numbers are provided with the budget, and really just illustrates another example of how inflation continues to, you know, impact those increases to expenditures. I will also share, of course, the township is going through an assessment to identify other plans, just to see if we're able to find lower healthcare options for premiums for the township. But unfortunately, that's across the market, that those are the trends. I don't know that we're going to find another plan that's going to be much more affordable than what we're currently paying, but we are conducting that assessment in Q1 of 2026. With that said, we also provided actual dollars in the budget, since you've last seen it from CNET, to include the closed captioning option. And I'm going to look to the Finance Director to see if there were other items besides the two that I have already mentioned, that would be amendments that we did not discuss, but ultimately are just part of those operational expenses that unfortunately we have to update. Outside of those changes, the changes reflect what was discussed at the last board meeting prior to the changes that are seen this evening. And so with board consideration, we ask that you authorize advertisement of a public hearing to adopt the budget at the next meeting. Or, excuse me, the Home Rule Charter requires that the budget is adopted in either the first or the second meeting in December. No earlier, no later. Could be later, actually, but no earlier. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, so this is the final bite at this apple. I'll start with Ms. Strickland.
Sure, I just, well, I just wanted to note, there was still a healthy balance in liquid fuels after moving the public works truck over there. Am I reading that correctly? There's still 400,000 in there. Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I don't think that's bad, because like I said during the budget meetings, that could go down, our allocation. So since we have all of our micro-surfacing in there, I don't think it's bad. But if that amount starts to tend to stay consistent, we're just not sure right at this moment. But if it does stay consistent, I would suggest spending that down.
Absolutely. I think right now our funds from the state and federal level are contingent on what's happening beyond our control. And so having that 400,000 surplus is probably to our advantage. But you are absolutely right. We've got our eye on it, and we certainly will consider that when we do budget preparation next year. And I'll share with the board again, you know, we've been in a deficit unfortunately for the last eight or nine. Actually, we worked on this. I'm looking at our Finance Director. We actually went back and did all of the manual research, bless you. I believe it's been over 10 years. When was the last time we had a balanced budget at Ferguson Township?
2008.
2008 was the last time Ferguson Township had a balanced budget. And again, I really see that as a reflection of just inflation over the years, and we've been fortunate to be able to maintain and mitigate our expenditures. But as you know, that can only last so long. And we do have healthy reserves, approximately 8.5 million dollars in reserves. So, you know, we have a healthy reserves, and ultimately, our auditor has suggested that really a municipality only needs to, not necessarily recommending by your manager, but only needs to keep three months of operational expenditures in reserves. I strongly consider that we keep more than that, but that is ultimately what's recommended as the threshold. So we exceed that amount and have about 8.5 million in reserves, and anticipated to have close to 10 million by the end of this fiscal year, which probably isn't a bad place, given unpredictability in the market. Does that answer your question? I don't know who had a question, but...
Who was it? I think one, I'm sorry, Ms. Stevens?
I'm done, thank you.
Strickland?
Thank you for, Ms. Strickland pointing out the liquid fuels, so yes.
Got it. My only question was on the General Obligation Bond Fund, which is currently funded at a certain amount. We're going to add to it next year. So it'll kind of increase, it'll essentially double up to then pay, and then there'll still be money in there. Is that accurate?
We keep one year of principal and interest in the fund, because it's earning the same rate as all of the other money. So it doesn't matter whether it's in the general fund or the bond fund. It's always been paid ahead, essentially.
Right, but it's sitting in this fund as restricted, correct?
It is, yes, for that purpose, so.
Okay. I think it would make sense not to restrict it, or does it make sense to restrict it?
I think we have to, we traditionally restricted it. I don't know if there's a municipal ordinance or code.
Well, it's restricted by the type of fund it is, right?
I get it, but if we don't fund that, if we were to take out the funding of it for 2026, it wouldn't really do anything.
It would just leave it in the general fund.
It wouldn't do a transfer. I'm not sure if there's any policy, like municipal policy, that could have been enacted. I'm not saying there is or isn't. I would have to look at the historical, or Todd would need to look at the historical policies to see what might define or not define that particular fund. But that's a good question, because we are a little reserved in our responses, can't tell.
Copy. No, no worries. And so I think that would be an ask, is to unrestrict, like, don't fund it another 400,000 dollars for 2026. Fund it in 2027 with the 400,000 dollars to pay the bond, and then we free up some dollars for whatever the use may be, and maybe it might even serve as another opportunity to reduce another taxation lever, which is currently being used.
If I may, and germane to the conversation, I'm thinking there's an election coming up tomorrow.
Really?
New faces might be at this table. It might behoove us that after the start of the year with new folks sitting here, that we have maybe a Finance 101 conversation, where we go through the funds and we talk about all the different types of funds. Because I know that was enlightening at COG, where we said, yeah, here are five funds. Oh, by the way, four of these are really actually restricted funds, where we call them XYZ, so they're different. And you go, oh, so maybe just putting a bug in the manager's ear that it might be good for us at that point.
You might recall, we did something like that. I can't remember. It was called a leadership meeting. And it was the first ever that we had done since I've been with the township in 2018. But yes, we certainly anticipate that that will be another opportunity to do a refresher for those that are still on the board, and also introduce new oncoming elected officials with that information.
Thank you. I hadn't thought of us germane, so appreciate the space.
Sounds good. So...
May I suggest that the board, that we look into that and see what ties or obligations we have per policy before we make a commitment to change anything? And quite honestly, I just, I don't know. And before we suggest removing it, with the expectation the board would anticipate that removal, and then we find tomorrow, we really shouldn't remove that, or it's done a certain way. You might recall like the TIF, right? Like we manage, some people look at the TIF and they think, why is the Transportation Improvement Fund done this way? We should do it better. But it's tied specific to a municipal code of ordinance. And so I just want to recognize that I'm unfamiliar if there's... if there is or isn't a code of ordinance tied to that particular fund. And I'd like some time to be able to look into that without an expectation that we make that change and have an immediate administrative additional work to do, to do a budget amendment right after we pass it. So if the board would allow us to look that up, present, and then we can integrate that into maybe next year.
Well, there's two ways to...
I'd be bringing that back to you sooner than later.
No, thank you, and I think there's two ways to do it. There's either, I mean, do nothing, or the motion that's contingent on it, there not being a policy conflict. So I'll leave it up to you as to what you want to do there. You as in board.
I don't know, does Jeremy have any comments?
Ah, Mr. Thompson, I'm so sorry, you are up there, you've been, any comments, sir?
Yeah, no, no, no comments to add.
All right.
Mrs. Patty, I move that we authorize for the advertisement of the public hearing on the Ferguson Township Draft 2026 Annual Operating Budget as proposed in the agenda, which is your do-nothing.
I would second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded in discussion.
I would say just to your point, if staff would look into it for the following year and just keep it as it is for this year.
Yeah.
There's a problem with that. That we're literally locking away $400,000 in a restricted fund? And it's not usable.
It's a debt, it's a debt we already have.
No, no, meaning, so there's $400,000 in there right now? Right, Madam Manager, $400,000 in there?
Do we pay it quarterly or annually?
Currently, there's money, I paid the second one today, so there's currently money in there to cover 2026.
I think we're going to keep the finance director a little more at ease.
However, however, there's $10 billion of the general fund. So if we need $400,000 to cover something from that bond fund, there's a lot of other things. We have ample reserves in the general fund. I don't think that we need to not transfer that money over.
So we don't have a separate fund for reserves. Reserves are in the general fund. So I think if I'm understanding our finance director correctly, it's like, we don't need to free up dollars to make sure there's a plethora of funds in general fund, because that's where our entire reserves reside. So the board, certainly, if you want to allocate $400,000 back to the nearly $10 million in general fund, you could. I think it gives the finance department the space and flexibility they need to continue operations in terms of payment to our debt, because there are consequences, right? If we're late, we can get, it affects our rating, and we are superior rating with our, you know, within the market, and it also can lead to a fine. And so I'm sure that it gives him, as the finance director, the space and flexibility that he needs to know that we can just continue operations as we've done in the past, but certainly report back to the board, and this would be easy, I would imagine. We could get back to the board with an update by the time the budget was being enacted, if not before. Would that...
I don't think there's any risk of being late. That's not where I'm going.
No, I think he's, I think there's concern about if we don't have the funds there and we have to do a budget amendment to get the funds put in there.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not, yeah, we can go about it. Motion on floor. Any more discussion now? All right, all those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Well, we're going to go back to Mr. Striker, you there? Just to get your report from earlier. Thank you for the, on the State College Borough Water Authority, you're up.
Yeah, good evening. So I don't have a whole lot to report, but at the last meeting, there were some questions about the increase in the tab fee. And I provided a copy of the Glenn Dobson Forman Report that explains how that was calculated. I think it was in your meeting materials, so hopefully that explains it. But if not, I can try to answer any questions, I guess. The other issue that, I guess, concerns the authority, aside from fire hydrants, I guess, is the, you know, the Rock Springs water issue. And there was a public hearing held on the 30th of September at the township meeting room there, where the public had an opportunity to comment to the PUC judge. And then I guess there was an evidentiary hearing on October 20th down in Harrisburg. And from what I gather, there weren't any really results that came out of that. I did not attend that hearing, I don't know if somebody from the township went, but if you did, I suppose you can provide a detailed report on what happened there. So I guess that concludes my report, unless anybody has any questions.
Stevens?
No.
Mr. Heller, Ms. Strickland?
No, it's great information, thanks for including all that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Striker.
Great, have a good evening.
Very good, we'll move on to new business. For the consent agenda, any items that we want to pull?
I would like to pull E.
Yep, any others? Very good, I want to turn a motion to accept the consent agenda minus E, A, B, C, D, F, G, and H.
Mrs. Patty, so moved.
This is Matt, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And we'll talk to E, Madam Manager.
Yeah, so this is a, I think we could probably remove it from the consent agenda. We had an end, when we have events like the Pennsylvania Municipal Summit and elected officials are in attendance, there is funding allocated for board members to be registered and to receive a reimbursement for travel and hotel lodge. Outside of that, regardless of how small or big additional increases might be for optional sessions, they're not typically budgeted, and this would be an item that would consider additional approval. So it's on the agenda.
My only thing is, there's no cost, there's no invoice or anything. How much is this?
It's a great question.
And that one, I wanted to, when I saw that too, I wanted to flag it to say, because it said supervisors, and I was one of them that took it, but actually, the whole PML thing and this extra thing and my hotel and my travel and everything, I paid for on my own, so please do not include me in any invoices.
Thank you, that's a good point. All of the supervisors, I find, all have their own, just like with staff, I also never charge any additional foods outside of what's in the conference to the township, outside of the personnel policy. So I respect and I apologize for looping all of you in as the board. But oftentimes, that variation might lead to a selection to attend a session. And honestly, sometimes it may be unknowing to a supervisor that there is an additional fee, because there's just an abundance of sessions. I am told it's a $63 optional event, so it's just a matter of if the board would like to particularly pay this opportunity for an attendance, or...
So this is on here on purpose? Like, this is on purpose on here, like we want...
And then we're working on a policy for managing this in the future.
So did this already occur, or is this...
I'll have to check. I would be comfortable removing it and then getting more information to bring back at a later time. If the board is okay with that.
Yes.
I'm good with that, and I also, I did not attend. I wasn't on.
I don't know that it's necessarily something that isn't an option for the board to consider attending optional sessions. I would just say we would want a budget for it in the future. Just because the supervisor training budget, it's always been in the budget for several, several years, far back before my time. And we just, it's a minimal amount of money, and so I want to make sure that we have enough money that's budgeted. So when staff ask me, do you want to approve this in the future, I know what to do.
Thank you for the transparency.
Yeah, absolutely, appreciate the transparency, we're scratching E. No cost there. All right. We're on to item two, Public Hearing on a Resolution to Ratify Tentative Agreement with Teamsters on behalf of Ferguson Township Public Works Department to constitute a collective bargaining agreement for an effective term beginning January 1, 2025 and ending December 31, 2027. Madam Manager?
Yes, this comes to the board following several discussions with the Teamsters Teamsters Union 764, Teamsters 764 Union, oh my, it's already that time of the hour. So the negotiations began several, several months ago. We've been in a, you know, in a position to really focus in on wages, provided with the agenda is a really long narrative. Ultimately, there's been good faith effort in negotiations and in recent communications via email with the Teamsters Advocate, there was consensus between him and our HR Director that we believe we've reached an agreement. And so the union is scheduled to meet on Wednesday to ratify by vote. And this evening, the board is asked to consider the tentative agreement that outlines all of the items that were negotiated over the last several months, following with the assumption formal action is to approve the tentative agreement. Then the contract is revised and signed by both parties. And there are many more details that I could go in, and there are several documents attached, including a memo, and the narrative in the agenda is pretty lengthy. I mean, I won't deny the fact that this extended far beyond what we would usually consider the appropriate or average time for negotiations. There was, and the board understands, of course, in exact session, we can talk about personnel, and negotiations are considered to be confidential until there is a tentative agreement executed, at which point that tentative agreement becomes a public document. Wages were certainly an item that took some time to find consensus, and reasonably so. The incremental increases over the last decade have been reasonably low. And, you know, thankful for this, you know, this board of supervisors, our current administration, you know, we work diligently, and we were all very dedicated to find mutual consensus. And so there is a breakdown from 2015 to 2025 of what those wages have looked like. There's been a disparity in wages for over 10 years. But with this CBA, we will bring, I'm happy to share that we will bring those wages for our public works, road crew, arborist mechanic, and custodians to competitive wages within the regional market. Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Would you take a motion?
Maybe.
Sorry, apologies, I was jumping the gun. Mr. Guard.
Let's do this, I'll do the kind of similar, well, let's see. Still a little bit of board discussion to the extent we have some, take some feedback. Yeah, it's a public hearing. So now open floor for public hearing.
I've been waiting to start talking, because I have a long list of things to get through, but this is only a small question before we get to the other ones. Because I was not privy to any of the other information, I want to know about the retroactivity of this agreement to the beginning of 2025. And does that apply to those that have left the township? And if so, who is on the hook for those wages?
The agreement is retroactive to January 1 of 2025 for the employees that are currently here at Ferguson Township.
And do you anticipate anybody being able to come back on that? Will that be on the union to fight back on, or is that on the township?
I'm not sure how to answer that.
If you might want to, I don't understand unions as well, so I want to make sure that we, as taxpayers, are protected as well as the employees that are owed that money is getting that as well, so.
So I will, I will share with you that what's in the agreement, and once it's unified by, ratified by both parties, it's concluded.
Okay, perfect.
So what's been negotiated is based on what is mutually agreed upon by both parties. So employees that have left the township is not a negotiated item into the contract.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. On to the next one.
I was ready to stop you, five minutes. Can't stop you. As good as a cherry, I can't stop anybody, jeez. Anyone else?
Man with power.
And we'll do one more call for any public comment, going once, going twice. I will now propose public comment. And I will entertain a motion, Mr. Heller.
I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution to ratify contingent upon the union ratification the tentative agreement with Teamsters Local Union Number 764 for the Ferguson Township Public Works Department and authorizing the Chair and Township Manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement for the term January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027.
This is Patty, I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded in discussion? Stevens, any?
No.
Mr. Heller?
I just want to say how much I appreciate the Teamsters and the township getting together. And the part that stands out to me is the narrative here where it calls out, Township and Teamsters have mutually acknowledged and addressed the longstanding wage disparities, aligning public works pay scales with neighboring municipalities to strengthen recruitment, retention, and operational excellence. It was noted that we've had some big issues with wages in the past, and I appreciate everybody coming to the table and working to resolve this for the union and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strickland.
Yep, no group, please comment.
I do too, but I'm going to go a step further. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ms. Stevens, Ms. Strickland, Mr. Heller, Madam Manager and your team for getting this done. This is long overdue. I didn't realize how bad it was until being in the seat, kind of sitting up here and then kind of seeing some of the data that not everybody in the general public can see. It's unfortunate. And so now we're essentially, you know, kind of correcting some, dare I say, sins of the past. So appreciate folks for being patient. Those that were patient for being patient, I should say. And allowing Madam Manager and the team and the, thank you to the union stewards, to the Teamsters just at large for kind of working through this, because this is important. And I also want to say that, you know, we could not talk about this as a board until Madam Manager said, hey, we got a document. We could not talk about this. And so I want, there's a lot of things we, we just couldn't talk about it. So I just want folks on CNET and just found there are a lot of things that were, you know, kind of swirling around the internet, and this was one of the issues that we just could not talk about, now we can, so. Legally, legally talk about it. We don't want to get the township sued, we don't, we don't need any more legal fees on township. So I'll stop there. And I'll call the question, all those in, I'm sorry, this is a public, this is a roll call vote, so, Madam Manager?
Thank you, this is a roll call vote for a resolution to approve the tentative agreement with the Teamsters Local Union 764. Vice Chair Patterson?
Yes.
Supervisor Stevens?
Yes.
Supervisor Heller?
Yes.
Supervisor Strickland?
Yes.
Supervisor Thompson, or Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed, or resolution passes unanimously.
All right, we're on to item three. All right, we're on to item three. Seven dot three, consideration for funding support for affordable housing preservation in Sylvan View Estates. Turn on the Madam Manager.
Thank you. And provided with the agenda is a brief narrative that outlines that Ferguson Township has been presented with a unique opportunity to support the preservation of single-family detached and duplex units located in Sylvan View Estates neighborhood. This evening, we have with us College Township Manager Adam Broomball and also board member of the Center County Housing and Land Trust. We also have with us our, the Executive Director of the Center County Housing and Land Trust, so they can speak more directly about the opportunity that's been presented to the Center County Housing and Land Trust, particularly with an option to preserve, potentially preserve the, the income-based restricted units in Ferguson Township. And so that, that's what I would say is unique about this particular item. And thank you, Adam and Missy, for being here this evening to talk more about the opportunity.
Thank you, Madam Manager. As Sanfresa said, I'm Adam Broomball. I am the College Township Manager, but I'm not here tonight in that capacity. I am a board member and officer of Center County Housing and Land Trust. Mrs. Sunover, who's with me here this evening to hopefully answer any particular technical questions that might arise, is the Executive Director of the Center County Housing and Land Trust. And I'm here tonight basically to primarily advise the Ferguson Township Board about an opportunity that was only recently brought to the attention of the Land Trust. And in that particular case, this has to do with a forty-nine unit, single-family, combination, single-family and duplex housing development located in Ferguson Township, that being Sylvan View Estates. That, that particular development has recently, within the last year, has actually completed its Lytec thirty-year affordability program. And the owner, investor of that particular development is interested in selling that development. And overtures have been made to a number of folks, some other investors, but also to the Center County Housing and Land Trust. One of the individuals who has been in concert, or not concert, sorry, in conversations with the current owner, came to the Land Trust seeking some support for some of the soft costs that would be involved in that individual making an application to the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency for the purpose of making the acquisition and doing the rehabilitation of those forty-nine units. The, the upshot here is that there are some significant fees that are involved in terms of what otherwise might be called soft costs associated with assembling all the information that's required to make this application to the PFHA. And so about three hundred thousand dollars. We're trying to reach out to other organizations that participate with the Center County Housing and Land Trust in securing some of those funds. So the real pitch here tonight is to make the Board of Supervisors aware that this is a project that happens to be in Ferguson Township, and to try to get a sense of willingness on the part of Ferguson Township to participate in making a, what I would consider to be a designated contribution to the Land Trust specifically for the purposes of helping to assemble these funds in order for this particular investor to make this application. The, the investor in question and approach to Land Trust is an individual that has been very successful in our median area of securing PFHA funding for these type of income-restricted housing projects, and has done a very good job in terms of operation and ongoing maintenance and facilitation of that program. So essentially tonight, I don't have a lot to, to offer to you. I do think it's an opportunity. One of the concerns that we have, obviously, throughout the center region, has to do with the creation of more affordable housing, but likewise, the retention of our existing affordable housing is equally important. This is, again, something that really has dropped within our lap within the last two weeks. It's probably not ideal for consideration at this stage of a lot of our budgets, but nonetheless, it is an important project, and we are here tonight to answer any particular questions that you may have. Missy, if there's anything you would like to add?
We can, we can just see what your questions are first. But these are forty-nine single families who have been income-restricted for thirty years. And for some of those homes, they've already turned over because the increased rents have already forced some of those families to relocate. It would be like another mobile home community going away.
So if there are questions, we'd be happy to try to answer as best as we can with the information we have.
Mr. Strickland. I'm sorry, Ms. Stevens.
So would it be just an extension of this program? Are these are just going to be? I don't, I guess I'm confused.
So there was, in the, in the history of low-income housing tax credits, Lytec, as, as we all refer to them, there was one time that single-family homes were eligible. And the current owner of Sylvan View Estates took advantage of that program and constructed these forty-nine single families. That was the only time that Lytec allowed for single-family. On December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, that thirty-year period ended. So that Lytec-type funding source is no longer available, and it hasn't been available for those thirty years. So this would be a developer utilizing the housing and rehabilitation funds available through FAIR, which also comes with income restrictions, and those can go up to thirty years. And some developers have even been able to get longer than thirty years, or on the other side, fifteen. But most developers look for about a thirty-year return on that, on that tax, or those funds that they get, rather, as opposed to the low-income tax credits. So this would be a different program than low-income housing tax credits. So, for example, these funds could be used where a percentage of these homes would have to be rented to individuals who earn a certain income bracket, fifty percent of the area median income. And this is where the technicalities come in, and I'm not a developer, so I'm not certain of some of these. But they can also go all the way up to eighty percent of the area median income, which puts it at the workforce housing bottom of the Ferguson Township ordinance threshold for workforce. So it's, it has some more flexibilities than the Lytec program does.
So this is like upgrading roofs, heating systems, more energy efficient sort of things?
I would assume that the developer would be looking at doing those things, because when I took a tour of these homes, there were two vacant homes last year when they called me and said, hey, we want to sell. I was like, okay. I thought it was one or two, so I went and looked, and then it was like, hey, we have forty-nine. And I said, we can't, we don't have eleven million dollars to spend. Many of the roofs need to be replaced. When they would have turnover, then the appliances would be done, but very little has been done for energy efficiency. So those would be things that we'd definitely be looking at.
Thank you.
Mr. Strickland.
So these are all rentals?
Yes, they are all rentals, and it's my understanding that the developer would be keeping them as rentals, but those are conversations that we would still yet to have.
And maybe this is in the technical details that we don't have yet, but you would be looking to keep all, is it forty?
Forty, forty-nine.
All forty-nine as income-restricted?
They, right. That's what we would be, we would be talking with the developer about having all forty-nine remain income restricted.
Okay. And then would you, would the Housing and Land Trust be more of the administrative partner, or would you have an ownership stake in this?
Some, some of that is to be determined. There may be an actual role for the Land Trust and typically with, with our, our restrictions on the land, but that, that remains to be seen. One of, one of the factors here is that these, these, the original Lytec commitment ended about a year ago. And so technically, the, this particular development has been on the market quietly for, for a while now. And the concern is that now that we've been made aware of that, that we theoretically could lose those and they can become market-rate units. And so what we're trying to do is to quickly assemble as much of the soft costs that are required to, to, to make this effort move forward as we can. And some of these details have yet to be worked out. But again, any kind of, any kind of a contribution toward this would be a contingent-type contribution made to the Land Trust, not to a particular developer, but it would be for a specific purpose. And in the event that through further negotiations, discussions, it doesn't move forward, there, there, everyone would be released of any obligation they have, because this is for a very specific purpose.
And I assume some of the soft costs would include legal, because that's a pretty high number. So I would assume that that's incorporated into that.
I think there's legal, there's appraisals, there's, there's assessments as far as the rehab that's going to be required and things like that. So, and also the, the actual compilation of the actual document, the application itself to facilitate housing finance.
Okay. And then to the manager, I assume all these, any funds contributed would come out of the Workforce Housing Fund?
If we decided, if the board decided to make a motion in support of a contribution, we would add that to the twenty twenty-six operating budget, and we would, it would make sense to put it in, in that, in that line item?
Yes, to remove it out of that. We have a restricted fund.
We would earmark it for this particular item.
Yes, so it's not coming out of the, this would not come out of the general fund. This wouldn't come out of a pool of money that's sitting there waiting for a program. So, yes, any ongoing costs that we would be associated with would, I would assume would be voluntary at this point, because you're only asking for an upfront donation, and that you would have no idea at this point.
It would only be if the, if the FAIR fund application is successful.
Is successful, right, right.
Mr. Heller. I, first off, I do want to say I want to hear from the public on this one. I'm sure there are folks that would like to talk about this, so I might reserve some comments. But I am for anything we can do to support folks that need the support. And when I look at this, and I think my concern with the motion is that we are allocating the township funds, but it sounds like we still need to fill out maybe some blanks as to where the money's going to come from. Do we have the money? What is reasonable, et cetera, before allocation? But it sounds like time is of the essence. So I'm wondering if maybe a, we say the word soft, but a softer motion is more appropriate tonight to investigate how to fund this as opposed to allocating. But I'd like to maybe hear when, is an investigation enough to stave any external influences that might come in and swoop everything and change our, our narrative? Or what do, what's your best guess?
That's, well, and that's what it would be. It would be a guess. We really have no way of knowing. As I said, it's been over a year now, or nearly a year since this has been at least quietly marketed. And I have no, we have no idea whether or not there's anybody in the wings beyond the, the individual that we have spoken with directly about their intent to, to keep these in an affordable program and pursue that PFHA funding. So we just don't know how, we just don't know how soon anything may, may evolve or develop.
Thank you. I'll reserve my other questions until I have a public comment.
How many are market rate units right now of the forty-nine?
None. Well.
Try again.
I don't have access to the property manager's records, but it was my understanding some months ago that they had already given the tenants in their renewals escalations in their rents. And at that time, I was told that I believe two had already said that they would not be renewing. And once that tenant moved out, then that removed that, that gradual escalation for that unit. So I'm not, those are some of the details with the current ownership that we just don't have access to right now.
Copy that. And are you saying the current ownership wants to move forward with PFHA, or it's a new buyer?
It would be a new buyer. My previous discussions, which I've had several with the current owner, it really is their, it's a, it's a partnership. It really is their intention that in all, if, if it were a perfect world, they would say this is only going to be sold to an entity that will commit to keeping it affordable. But because they want to divest of this property, because they stewarded it for thirty years, thirty-one now, they can't really put that restriction. So it really is at the mercy of the market. If an out-of-town investor finds out about it and wants it, it's forty-nine single-family homes on Blue Course Drive at Westerly Parkway. It's walkable to the school. I mean, it's a great location. Someone could buy it and actually tear them all down and build new there. If, well, they'd have to go through zoning, which that would be, you know, more guardrails. But these developments do not come on the market very often in a market like ours.
Not a big fan of soft-cost funding. As, as, just from experience, it, it's, it's kind of goes into a, I think, you know, someone mentioned legal and some of the other places that you, you can never recoup that back. Whereas if it were more on the hard-cost side, you know that you'd be able to see that roof, you'd see that, that siding, you know, the, it's tangible and it's going into a specific thing versus kind of a, you know, one of seven different, eight different categories that you won't see unless, you know, so the, but I, I certainly can understand and would appreciate to know that there's, there is a serious buyer, that they are, particularly the developers, that, you know, they put money where their mouth is to start. And if they truly are interested in this, they'll move forward with it. And if there's some sort of, hey, in order to make this work, to get some sort of, you know, even close to reasonable returns, they might need a couple dollars, you know, in, in, I think, I don't know if our IDA has any money, but maybe we start funding it. But, but there's some way to help, but I'm not sure it's just kind of, in my opinion, it's kind of these soft costs in this way. But again, open to explore. I'll pause. Mr. Strickland, you have anything else, sir?
No, I was going to point back to the Workforce Housing Fund.
That is, is that money there yet?
Yeah.
We got the check?
No.
We did. It's in the budget. I don't know, do we get a check?
We were anticipating to receive it this year for the West College, for the housing on West College Avenue, but we have not received it. There hasn't been advancement on that particular development.
Right, but it will be.
But we are anticipating it.
Okay.
If they want to move forward, it's part of the terms.
Yeah.
Copy that.
So adding to that, I think a potential funding source has been identified. Okay. But my concern is ensuring that this money is used appropriately. And when I looked at, at the motion, you know, including but not limited to Sylvan View Estates project, I, I don't know what, it already sounds like we're making concessions to spend this money somewhere else and not in, only even Sylvan View. So I guess I'm concerned if, if we do go forward with this, how will we ensure that it's being used to the degree that we expected?
I can tell you from conversations Missy and I have had relative to the Center County Housing and Land Trust, this would be the only thing that those funds would be utilized for. And if there was a reason that this would not move forward, then that, that commitment or allocation would be either, there's no need for it. It would be returned, anything that we receive to hold, which I don't even recommend that. Basically, what we're looking for from anyone, these same. Um, basically what we're looking for from anyone, and these same conversations are going to be held at College Township, likely at Patton Township, um, for, to ask the same kind of question. Um, but we're really looking for a commitment for a contribution toward these costs. And it would be the only thing that those funds would or could be used for.
So if I may to that point, as we've done with grants and other things, we usually say, or, hey, until you get one or two other people that have signed up for this too, we're going to sit back. But once those commitments are there, then we will make an investment. So we could also amend or have a motion that would say something to that effect too.
But somebody always has to be first.
Somebody has to be first. I get that.
And, you know, as the executive director for the Center County Housing Land Trust, we represent all municipalities except for the borough. Um, and I've been involved with this since the land trust was created, actually when it was the idea in 2005. This is the first time since the closure of the Milot Mobile Home Park in Patton Township, that the land trust has been in a position to really help facilitate a, a really meaningful multi-unit impact on the housing. And when Mr. Brumbow and I both were, were contacted and we started having this conversation, if we did not come to Ferguson Township first to inform you as our elected officials, and I'm a Ferguson Township resident, so this is really near and dear to my heart, uh, because I remember when these homes were being built. If we didn't come to you first, that would be, or, or didn't approach the entirety of the center region, with the exception of the borough, because they have their own funding, um, challenges there with the use of their funds. That would not be us being good stewards of the resources that we have at our disposal. And that would not be good because we would not be informing you of the opportunity. So really, we're just here to say, this is, this is something that we've been approached. We don't have the details, just to kind of say, what, what might you think? Would you want us to go back and try to get more details? That's totally fair because we need more details. But we really want to know, is this something worth pursuing to the elected board of Ferguson Township? That we try to preserve 49 single family homes or not? You know, there's lots of different things that can be done to work and strive and fight for affordable housing, and we're just presenting you an option. That's what we're doing tonight.
Ms. Stevens.
Um, so this program, how many in the past, let's say two or three years, how many developments have rolled out of this program, that same one that Sylvan has just ended? And how many are you anticipating rolling out of that program, that 30-year affordable housing program in the next few years? So I, I guess I'm trying to get, how much affordable housing are we losing because of this? Because this surely isn't the only one.
Right. There's lots of Lytec properties, uh, even just in the center region. And just as an example, um, you know, the land trust, we partner with Habitat very closely. And their executive, executive director and I, we follow these. For example, there's, uh, two units in Harris Township, Ashworth 1 and 2. Those are all four bedrooms, three and four bedroom townhomes. And those are all low income housing tax credit properties. They each roll off of their affordability requirements, restrictions in the next two to three years. So that's going to be two developments there. Um, in the last year, Addison Court in the borough came out from their affordability and they were able to enter into an agreement with the borough to help keep those income qualified. A lot of the Lytec properties are within the borough and there are some along Ferguson Township in the Wapalani, uh, area, those apartment complexes. But again, because these are single family homes, this is the unicorn, that PHFA, after they did this, they said, we're never doing it again. I don't know why, but they said, we're never doing it again. Um, so the Lytec properties, now the PHFA properties, um, I mean, those are, you just have to spend the funds within 18 months of having them and adhere to their requirements. But the fair funds that we're talking about, those are the funds that Habitat and the land trust utilize that grant to do a lot of what we do together. And that's homeownership, but you can also use it for rental properties as well. Uh, the State College Community Land Trust and the Home Foundation, they utilize home funds, like for their old Bullsburg Road projects that they have, they utilize fair funds. So Patty, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Stevenson. To, to answer your question, for the Lytec, we know that because those are published. That's a federal grant program. For the fair, that's a little harder to understand and to, and to get a handle on because it's not as readily available.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Stevens? Tyler. Thank you. I mean, I guess, uh, is there a motion to be had here? Or do we want to ask for additional clarity from someone's? I, I would just say that, that there's an opportunity here to, to help. I think perhaps through, again, I think it's some sort of maybe low interest kind of second, third loan or something to help out.
And I, I'll share with the board what we, if the board is interested in allocating some funds to support this initiative, understanding that it's really a little, it, it's, we just don't know where it's going. Um, the board certainly could consider what we call earmarking, or we could refer to as committed funds for this project. And so restrict, restricted is a little bit more of a different definition, more aligned with what we discussed with that special fire protection, uh, tax ordinance. But, but committed is just acknowledging the board's setting aside X amount of dollars and these dollars are committed solely for the purposes of this. And we can certainly allocate funds this evening and even add to a future board agenda that, uh, the board maybe puts a little bit more parameters on. We could even consider a, a resolution that really highlights exactly what board consensus criterion would need to be met for those dollars to be sent. I mean, there's ways that we can shape this that leave the option for this contribution. Uh, I think while it's, it's certainly as Missy's already shared, you know, it, it's timely to bring this to Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. Uh, it's also timely for our budget preparation, so we could go ahead to avoid that budget amendment. Just go ahead and add in an allocation if the board so chooses to make this contribution. And we could commit those funds and then at a board meeting, um, I'd say we could this evening, or we could at, at a future board meeting certainly discuss what that criterion would need to look like for board consensus to say, okay, under these circumstances, the township shall release these dollars if you decide to move in that direction. And I would say we could probably get that on for discussion as early as the second meeting in December or the, one of the first two meetings in January. I, I, I imagine, unless if Missy or Adam believe that it's going to move faster than two months, that's fair.
Well, the, the fair applications are due on November 20th. So I have not asked the developer because I'm 99.9% sure I know that the intention would be to file the application in the next fair round, which would be next fall. So this would not be something that the grant application is going to be due between now and the end of this year or the first quarter because the fair funding is awarded once a year.
I mean, we can go as, of course.
No, I was just going to make a motion.
I will entertain a motion.
Okay. Uh, this is Patty. I move that, uh, the board of supervisors, authors, the township manager to earmark township funds, uh, to the Center County Housing and Land Trust in support of, um, preserving affordable housing with Ferguson, town, within Ferguson Township, including, um, uh, uh, within Ferguson Township, limited to the Sylvan View Estates projects. Yes. Um, and incorporate the appropriate allocation into the fiscal year 2026 proposed operating budget.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Discussion. It's a proper moving second and discussion.
Yeah. Sure, open it to the com.
All right. Uh, we'll be happy to take any, uh, public comment on this. Ms. Corv.
Beginning to feel like that student in class that always has the answers, except I have all the questions today. Um, when I ask this, these questions, for those of you that don't know me, this is not coming from a place of not wanting to help. My core and who I am is helping people. However, our house needs to be taken care of before we can take care of someone else. And what I had heard earlier is we have workforce housing fund, but no check to fund. And as is with some grants that we've applied for in the past, they've become match grants to which is taken out of taxpayer money. So if we do not get the check, which could very well happen with our government shutdown, our taxes are going to have to pay the bill that you all are going to approve with an eye. I'm with you, Amari. Soft costs are horrible because we have no rate of return. This person could fully agree and use our money for all the legal purposes and then decide that they no longer want it to be affordable housing. We've lost $300,000 or however much that you guys want to sponsor or donate, whatever verbiage you want to use. So with that being said, when you make this motion, understand that affordable housing is important. Our budget has been upside down for 10 years. This is a large error issue to go and add to that if we don't have it balanced. And then also earmarking, um, you know, we use the term restricted, though that workforce housing, is it a restricted fund? If so, can it really be used for soft costs? I just want you to be cautioned of that. So, um, I think that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Hearing none. Uh, board discussion. Anything else from you, Ms. Stevens? Defend it.
Oh, I, I'm just in support of, I mean, this is in, within our township. We've lost some in the past. There's more in the region of workforce housing. Housing affordability is something that we're interested in. There's single family homes, as opposed to something else. And I just, I, I think that, I anticipate that we'll get the money because it's not, the, our workforce housing money is not coming from the federal government, right? It's coming from the, the development that we had. So, um, I am in favor of taking it, um, from the workforce housing. That's what it's for.
Ms. Corv.
So we didn't define an amount in this. So I guess that's my, uh, question.
Yeah, right. Sorry. I just read it right from the.
Yeah. So there was, there is no amount at this point determined. So.
So we can vote it down or amend it? If there's no amendment? Anything else?
I mean, I. It's come up with an amount and I'll amend it. Yes. Go ahead.
Okay. If we're coming up with an amount, let me ask, how much do we anticipate coming in to the fund?
It's a great question. If memory serves me right, it's approximately 1.2 million?
Restricted.
Well, no. The money would be collected to be utilized in gen, uh, for, yes, for workforce. Yes, it is.
It's restricted to only be used.
I can't speak to exactly how, what the like parameters are.
Legally, we, I guess my question is legally, we cannot use that for fire protection.
Correct.
Okay. Just using that as an example. I don't know where that example came from. Okay. So that money either is, what happens if we don't spend it usually?
We never collect it.
No, so I can't speak.
This will be the first time and it will be used in addition. So if anything, my, my recommendation would be to amend this to say, when funds in excess of $300,000 are available, name the fund again that we allocate $300,000.
Accept that amendment?
It's essentially free money. It's not our money. It's not taxpayer money. Is it taxpayer money from our, but it's not coming directly from our residents. It's coming from across the state.
Not from parcel, taxpayer parcels.
Right.
It's the fee and lieu.
Through fee and lieu.
Yeah.
It's the fee and lieu developing workforce housing or paying to the fund.
Right. So everything that we had talked about over the last year and a half, two years, planning for the fee and lieu, et cetera, this is now where the money comes in. Okay. That's an important distinction. I would be okay with the $300,000, knowing that it would be committed to this, only if that money was available through the anticipated 1.2 million dollars coming in from the fee and lieu.
And for clarification, we may not get that in Q1 or Q2, or we could get it in Q1. So I just, I just want to make sure the board understands that piece of it. I don't, we don't know when it's going to come in. And so the question I would ask the board then is if Missy were to approach the township between now and when the township might receive that fee and lieu, how would the board like that to be facilitated? That's, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there. That way it, we're not, you know, I don't get a call from Missy in six weeks or six months. I mean, I don't know. And, oh, we still haven't received our, our fee and lieu. So just putting that out there. And I think there's a way around that. We can always acknowledge, right, if we take from the general, if, if the board wants to do this, take from the general fund and, actually, I, I, I don't want to propose that option without really giving it some thought. So just throwing it out there that we could do that and that we may miss an opportunity.
Anything else, Ms. Tyler?
No.
Okay. I, oh, sorry. Did you want to make a motion to amend or?
Just, yeah, I, I think I was just looking at it in a little bit of a different approach, I guess, would be to contribute a, a smaller sum at this point, more to get the ball rolling to say we're committed to this project because I think that this is the ideal project for the use of the fee and lieu to, uh, sustain the existable, existing affordable housing. So, yeah, that's, I'm there.
I don't know if I'd be okay with that because there's no guarantee, there's no MOU, there's no anything at this point. But yet there would be, I would anticipate when it was Q1, Q2, and we'd actually have to spend, you know, the money. I, I just don't know, putting something out there in the ether without having something in writing is, is good.
Yeah, that's fair.
It is okay to commit to action without any, with, with nothing. I mean, I think that's probably step one. And correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mr. Brumbow, if we just say, look, we're in, we just don't know how yet because you don't know anything and you haven't told us anything about what this deal is. There is no deal. So to, to, to jump in with some number, I think is silly right now. I, I'm going to say the quiet part out loud. I don't think it's appropriate to have a number, but we can commit to action at some point when we can evaluate the deal and see exactly what is necessary to get the ball rolling, is whoever said it, said.
Yeah, I, we completely understand that. And I, I mean, I think that's acceptable. Part of what this evening was about was to gauge the interest on the part of the board supervisors to support this kind of an initiative. I think we have that generally speaking. Um, if there was a motion to make a, you know, a more solid commitment at some point in the future, that would be great. It's a start. It's a commit, you know, it is a commitment of some amount at some point. Um, and I think that that will be useful. Um, and to the manager's point, you know, we just don't know how quickly this may evolve. I think there's a good guidepost in what Missy had said earlier, that it is apparent to us that the new investor would be looking to make application in the next round, which would be in, which actually be. which actually will be awarded in the fall of 2026. So there likely would be some time. The only real issue that's out there is whether or not the properties themselves remain available to the new investor. And that's something that I don't know.
I can tell you right now, $200,000 a unit is a bit steep for those units, considering the amount of work that needs to go into them. But maybe somebody's got some patient money and they'll, they'll toss whatever they want into them. So Mr. Thompson, did you have anything?
No, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Just my final thought, I'm, I'm, I'm against this motion. I think we probably should have a motion that has something to do to maybe write a letter saying we're in at some point. We support workforce housing, but until we see a deal, we can't make any financial commitments at this time or something, something like that. But I, I just, I'm not sure we're in the right space to be able to do that.
So what's our current motion?
The current motion is the one that's written and-
Well, except instead of allocate funds, it was earmark funds, and then it was strictly for Sylvan View.
And, and if I may, that to me is enough of a call to action, because it doesn't say the amount, it doesn't say anything. It's just saying essentially we commit funds. We haven't said if it's a dollar, we haven't said if it's $10 million. It's, it's just a commit. And that to me, if anybody's going to a bargaining or a conversation about contractual obligations, MOUs, things like that, when I see the word commit, I go, okay, this sounds like they might be serious about something. And then we decommit if not.
This says allocate money in the budget.
No, we took that out.
Did you?
I said earmark.
Yeah, earmark. She didn't, yeah.
I took out the word allocate.
Oh.
And I said, and strictly for Sylvan View.
Yes.
So what does earmark mean?
Well, I don't know. It was a word something else used, I just repeated it. But I think it would be creating a, because I think this is asking to create an undefined line item in the
Yeah.
2026, or an, an unenumerated line item, so we wouldn't have a, a dollar figure in there at this point within the workforce housing fund. So.
The motion was generic.
Yeah.
To recognize that it was ultimately your decision.
I'm against it. I'd like to, but I, I think there would be a motion for a letter to commit to doing something once there's a clear deal.
Yeah, I'd be very in favor. I think it's, I think that's the same spirit of it.
Yes.
Because, you know, as I said, I'm, I think this is a great project. I would like to use the funds once entered into the account for this project, so.
I will call the question if there's no.
Well, wait, so are you making an amendment to it, or are you just?
Well, I'm wondering if you want to, maybe if you are-
You want me to withdraw? I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah, it's been properly moved and seconded. We withdraw it. However, someone could move to, and I don't know, make this into a letter that commits? Or we can just vote it down and then move forward.
Okay, make it friendly. We could amend the-
All right, I'll entertain a motion to make this into some sort of letter with, without earmarking any dollars. And writing a letter to the Center County Housing Land Trust to commit. Without, to something in the future once there's a deal.
Yeah, yes.
Could be a dollar, could be a million, okay. Is there, is there, there's a motion, I guess, Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Second, Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's going to be an interesting motion. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of amending the motion, do so by saying aye.
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 All right, so the motion, thank you, Ms. Heller. Opposed, do so by the same. All right, motion carries. So this is, we are now authorizing Township Manager to write a letter that will commit to the Center County Housing Land Trust support in an undetermined fashion until there's a deal in support of the affordable housing within Ferguson Township.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, so we-
Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully it gets the ball rolling with the other municipalities. All right, the next item is discussion on rules and procedures as it relates to agenda preparation, board-directed staff work in the board-manager form of government. Madam Manager.
Thank you. So this evening's agenda is, it comes with a great deal of consideration to staff workload and understanding that we have, for the last, I think, five to seven years, as part of the board procedures that is within the HRC required for the Board of Supervisors to adopt, we've integrated in a section that refers to board member request, and I think that it was well-intended and certainly provides an opportunity that, that generally exists without this, which is you would confer with the, you know, the administration or someone in the manager's office and identify a particular item, and then it gets through to the agenda without this additional administrative work, which, you know, ultimately requires a request that meets the criteria that's defined in Resolution 2025-2. It has to discuss what the legislative intent is, how it aligns with the strategic plan for Ferguson Township, and there's these requirements that have to be built in just to get it to the consent agenda, which generally means then a staff member needs to screen it to make sure that it aligns, put it on for the consent agenda, and then bring it back for, for discussion. And, and what we found is oftentimes, while it's certainly a productive, well-intended tool to get items on the agenda for discussion, sometimes it, it directly can engage staff and create some level of confusion within the work, like the workload for staff. You know, I've been given some consideration as to how I can kind of craft this in a way that puts in perspective. You know, right now, the township's workload is extraordinary, and every department is balancing these core services, capital projects, regulatory requirements. Since this administration in April of 2022, the board has conducted an organizational assessment. We've done an HR audit. We've also participated in the DCD Strategic Management oh goodness, it's abbreviated as the STAMP program, Strategic Management something program. And it's, it's really identified several different areas where the township's internal management processes really need to be expanded. I think we've discussed with the board, for example, recognizing that all of our digital files have to be managed a certain way for, in accordance with the Pennsylvania Historical Commission. You know, that's just one area for recognition. We've recognized that our, the way that our server retains files and our email requires a assessment and a thorough review for policy updates. We recognize that the township personnel policies haven't been updated since 2008. And so these are just a few examples that, you know, I think in the last board discussion, we identified that there weren't access panel doors that were put in in the Public Works Building 6, right? And so there are these additional areas that require a great deal of staff, resources, time. And then in addition to that, recognizing that, of course, we have items at a legislative level, your level, that you want to bring forward and have conversations, and we want to continue to do that, but in a way where, for example, if we're talking about a particular item, sometimes staff, you know, it, it just, it can, it can create some confusion. And it's something that, you know, we are working to manage and, you know, expand on our communications. And so trying to manage the regular municipal services, the internal operations, advance several new major initiatives, you know, this year, as recognized by the organizational assessment, the financial audit, the state transportation, or the management program, all have these recommendations that we're implementing. And these reforms, essential, also bring that cultural shift that we talk about frequently. You know, rebuilding these longstanding processes to ensure compliance, even ratifying that union contract took a lot of resources, some additional time to just sit in those bargaining sessions, but also to do those regional wage comparisons and make sure that we're doing that in a very systematic approach. That all takes a lot of time. And so recognizing that we have the Home Rule Charter, we have these additional legislative statutory requirements, and as, I'm sure it's not, you know, at all a surprise to you, but just recognizing that, having that systematic approach, or having some conversations with the manager's office so we can get your items on, or sometimes it's even as simple as if you have a question about operations, we can bring forward a presentation in a public meeting, and we don't have to go through that administrative process to get it on the consent agenda. Oftentimes, I think it's a, it's a conversation and, and figuring out how we can find that balance, so we aren't creating that potential confusion, and we can align more with our Home Rule Charter. Our Home Rule Charter very clearly identifies the development of the code, the municipal code of ordinances, which also identifies what the process looks like for not just rules and, and procedural steps, but it identifies so much more. And so as we work to try and uphold that accountability measure at a staff level, also trying to do that at all levels. Happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate your consideration.
Ms. Strickland.
I don't have anything.
Ms. Heller.
I have a lot of issues with this, a lot. Because as I read through this and I look through the Home Rule Charter and I see what's written on paper, this comes across very cleanly as the board handing over the reins to a township manager to go ahead and determine solely what goes on in the agenda. And if that's what the charter states, then I believe this whole conversation should be about amending and looking at changing the charter, not the process that we voted on and looked at and approved on how to move things onto an agenda. And I would rather this conversation look at the charter and not the process that we like and that we want.
That is absolutely another option. I think following the policies, particularly removing barriers where there's conflict with the policies is ideal. I think, you know, for example, the township received a, a request to put something on the agenda on Thursday, October 30th, and it didn't meet requirements in alignment with the MPC and the HRC. So there's still going to be some other particular statutory requirements that are going to inform staff's decision not to put something on the agenda. And these, the, the Home Rule Charter has been created for these safeguards. But to your particular point on this particular item, you know, I could say, listen, you've had three managers prior to me. This is how it's been. If you want to make the change with me as your manager, that's fine, absolutely fine. I would agree, change the policy. So we're not acting in, you know, outside of the policy. That is what creates some confusion.
And, and to my, the extent that I've pondered is and look at the Home Rule Charter and everything to that extent, the way again that this comes across is that the electives put in place by the citizens do not have a say as to what goes on the agenda. And that is a concern. So, and that's a concern that I have, that it's not for me to, to think about, it's for somebody else to litigate, you know? You bring in somebody else to say, wait a second, does this Home Rule Charter actually say that a non-elected official is in charge of creating the agenda? If it does, that seems to be a violation of voting rights and a whole bunch of other things. So I'm really concerned with where this is going, and I would actually recommend that we leave the ordinance as in, as is in place if for no other reason than to bring on that larger litigious conversation around our charter. I would rather have things in opposition so that we resolve them appropriately.
You good?
I'm, I'm good for now.
Ms. Stevens?
No, I, I agree. I, I think that this is the way that it's been done. It's, it's what, because I, I, I think if you were to go around and ask residents, you know, who, who do you talk to if you have a problem in Ferguson Township? They would have no idea other than, you know, my neighbors would say, well, we call you, we expect you to. And, and I know we've put in place things like the Citizens Request Center, et cetera, to track issues, but I, I don't think that people know that Todd is the Finance Director without going to look at the website, but they do know me, and, and so I would like a a means of, of being the voice to, of residents that I've been elected to do to bring it to a public meeting or have a public discussion. So I agree. I don't think I'm, I, but I, I see the point that you're making as well, but I would agree with Matt and I would like to keep it the way that we have it until we figure out something else.
Ms. Stevens?
I just want to offer that, you know-
Gosh, that's okay.
The seats are mixed up tonight, so it's confusing. I just want to offer, when this was created, it was created so that there would be a way for board members to get something on the agenda if they're not the chair. So, and I don't know how well that went before the policy was enacted or the resolution. So this was, what? Seven years ago? Yeah, 2018 or so. So prior to that, you know, that, that's why this was established, so that there was a, a better route. And so I think it's probably not been revised that often. If we have, I'm not sure if you remember, I don't, I don't know that we have revised it, so I think it's probably worth refining at this point. And I'll say, you know, it's some, sometimes in receiving those, it's helpful to, you know, look at it and say, well, this, I see this request coming in. This actually is something that's coming up in a related agenda item, and so those things can kind of work themselves out like that. So, and other times you would have like a, a pileup of agenda requests. You'd have three for a month, and so at times we've had to say, we can only do one per month so that we're not here for hours on end. So I think, you know, putting some of those policies in and the way that it was written so that it was to be brought as a discussion, I thought made sense. And so I think, yeah, I think it's one of those things, I can point to a number of different ordinances we've put in place and say, well, let's do it like this for now, and we'll see how it works out and what changes we have to make, so. I think the process works, you know, I think it does allow people to bring something. And I think, you know, in my experience, those requests would often go back and forth quite a few times for refining, you know, like get, you know, explain your question, you know, so it, it is not just a click it, submit it, that it's on there. So I, and I don't know if that's how it's, if that's how it's been going, but those things are written down. So I think it would make sense to have those types of things in writing to say, you know, maybe have a discussion first, you know, before it, it goes in, because it can be difficult too for a new supervisor to come on. And it, it was the intent that the supervisor presenting that would do the, the the footwork, you know, to, they would do the, the work to get the background, the materials and everything presented, and it would be presented for discussion. So, but I don't know that that's all laid out clearly for somebody new walking in, so I think.
And, and I think the way that it's written right now, it suggests or gives the, the perception that it's going to be on the next agenda. And so I know that there have been times where, you know, some board members are like, oh yeah, it can be in Q1 or Q2, and others are like, why isn't my, why isn't my board member request on this next agenda? And so it's, it, you know, and it's, it's, it's an uncomfortable conversation, because in one part, it's like, because staff just hasn't had the time. But to tell an elected official that is, is not ever where any of us really want to be. And so it, it just has created from a staffing level, some issues. And, and again, I'm, I'm in support if you ultimately want to change that charter for all future managers. And we, and it's written in a way where there's consistency and it's not going to conflict with other parts of the charter, then that's, that's, that's a reasonable option and isn't trying to create some of the issues that we've, that we've been experiencing.
I think I have a motion.
And the research, you know, it's- And the research, you know, sometimes it's like, well, I just want staff to do research. And then it's, and then, and then it's, wow. And then we do research and, well, I wanted this. And then we do that. And so it just really adds layers and strain. And it's, it is relatively new. So, I mean, you could refine it, but it's still going to go through this process that creates additional time. But I think that if you want to uphold a change at your legislative level, the Home Rule Charter is going to supersede all things. And that is where I would recommend you go, to uphold an equitable application to all of your future managers.
Before, before we go there, I, I want to, I have a comment, a couple of questions and then we'll go to public to the extent there's anything from the public. First question is, who drafted Resolution 2025-02?
Staff or myself?
And so follow on to that. So I guess with some experiences now for the last 10 months, now we want to maybe make some adjustments and, and understanding, you know, doing some reading now there's a need to adjust. Is that what I'm hearing? From, and read, remember what I'm reading?
I think it's a common, I think for me, I'm looking at trying to create some groundwork for alignment with the charter, right? Like I'm, this is not the role that I'm here for. You know, I, I've come in, I've done these organizational assessments, I've implemented these recommendations. We've done a lot of work, this administration, to correct and do things like bring wages that were, you know, longstanding disparities, bring them into alignment. We've done a lot of work. And so this is the, this is one of the, this is on the tail end, which is we really need to align our statutory requirements with our operational detail. And I will take that burden on and I understand that it, it's an uncomfortable conversation. But I also recognize from an operational level, this creates and jams up and it creates a bottleneck and it creates confusion at a staff level that I have to manage. And I want to create that continuity and that clear line of communication and expectation for your next manager. If you want to change the charter, let's do that.
Got it. I just, I want to focus on my questions. So if you can help me out, can you give me an example of this confusion? You've kind of mentioned a few times now, like it creates confusion. What is that confusion? I just, I'm not quite recalling an example and I just want to maybe get your perspective.
So earlier in the year, a board member sends an email and requests for an item to go on the consent agenda. And it goes on the consent agenda, but there's not adequate time to really package it. Or there's an oversight that it wasn't prepared in accordance to Resolution 2025-02. And now one board member has been able to get their item through the consent agenda while another board member, maybe their item was overlooked because it went to the assistant and not, and not, that hasn't happened recently. But it's just recognizing that it's just, I think one month we had three or four consent agenda item requests, one got missed. Board members sometimes express concern. Where did my, where did my board member request go? The research and then, and then staff sees, oh, this is what the board member wants. And so a really clear example would be maybe some time ago, a staff person's like, well, this is what the board wants, so I'm going to move forward. Because perhaps maybe the request is to do research that's going to primarily be designated to a different department. But it undermines the manager being able to say, well, let's integrate this into the work plan. We don't need to make this the next priority. We need to stay focused on what the goal is or deadline that's been communicated in the manager's report or et cetera. But once the staff sees that board member request, they will take that upon themselves sometimes to want to eagerly please and respond to your request. And it doesn't always allow for that collaboration or that approach. It undermines other aspects of the charter.
Copy. So I, what I, what I heard was folks aren't following the process and then there's confusion. So I, I get it that there's kind of the, there's the process and some folks aren't following it. And, and now we've also seen that there's some perhaps conflict with the charter. So I'll go to my next major question that I had with regard to charter. Have you, are you aware of in the municipal, was it chapter one, part six? I guess that will be section seven, one dash six oh seven?
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, no worries. But it's the citizen's right to be heard. And so you may recall.
Two point zero two of the charter or the code of ordinances?
Uh, the municipal code. So it's probably two point oh two. So in that one, it says the public shall have the right to submit agenda items to the board supervisor for the next, next scheduled meeting. And it has to be one week prior. And so if, I, I don't care because I'm a citizen too and additional board member. So if I want something on the agenda, I'm going to submit it a week prior as a citizen. And there we go, it's on the agenda. So whether we do this or we do that, I'm okay. Because as a citizen, I'm going to get my item on the board. But also as a board member, we had a process for a board member item. And that's in the charter. So I, I don't mind repealing this thing that's a little bit conflicting because it's, quite frankly, the, yeah, in, in the charter, it says the manager prepares the agenda. Okay. And we shouldn't conflict with the charter. Like that's like the Constitution, literally. It's like the founding documents of Ferguson Township. So we shouldn't conflict with it. We should roll right with it. But I, there's, there's one way, one way to skin the cat. There we go.
Ms. Heller.
Would you entertain a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, you and Chair Thompson may not like this one. I move that the board of supervisors direct the township manager to work with the chair and vice chair to prepare an amendment to Resolution 2025-02 titled Board Member Request to Place Items on the Agenda and Present a Revised Charter to Account for the amended Resolution 2025-02 for Board Review, Discussion, and Potential Adoption at a Future Meeting.
Revised Charter? Like we need to go to a referendum, like a vote to the entire township?
You have to pass an ordinance and then it goes on referendum. It takes a year and a half.
Present a proposed revised charter to account for.
I'm, I'm okay with the word, that's fine.
It takes time.
Yeah.
But if the charter is being cited as the thing that binds us to not hear from, I'll leave that motion on the table. That's the motion.
Is there a second? Is there another motion? Oh, cancel it. I did say I'd go to public, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Any items from the public? Who wants to go first? I'm okay with either. Get my timer ready for both of you.
Because I have to agree, this one is not acceptable for the township. And this is no disrespect to you, Ms. Manager.
There will be many more managers. And there were managers in the past. I'm not taking it personal, I'm just trying to align our charter.
There was one very key part of the charter that you left out. That's section 216, where it says that the board shall adopt rules of procedures for its meetings and for the assignment of members to committees. Such rules shall be designed so as to ensure full and equal participation in the deliberations of the board by all of its members. You all voted on that in 2502. You all did exactly what your charter told you to do. You just weren't given that piece of information in your packet. So before you harass Matt about the charter change, he's absolutely correct. But you're also empowered by section 216 of the Home Rule Charter. Also, if we're going to start following the rules of the charter, there's been other things by the board that have been approved for managers that don't live inside of our township. And that's also approved in our charter by you all. So this is not something that is separate from itself. This is not something that's crazy. You all accurately and appropriately came up with this rule so that our voices as citizens was heard by staff in which our tax paid money employs. You all are our employees. They all are your employees. Just keep that in mind. And because I feel myself getting all a little sassy, I'm going to stop there because I feel like I've given you your high points. I'm happy to talk more about it. But we as citizens are outraged that this is even on it because you all have done exactly what you're supposed to do. You just weren't provided all the information. Thank you.
Uh, I was, I was just reading 216. But, uh, Ms. Kew. Thanks, Ms. Cor. I'm including this walk-up time in your time.
That's why we have new carpet.
The Keough Trail. Give it time.
I was somewhat energized by your conversation about this issue before we even had an opportunity to speak. And, and I must say that the number of the items that Mr. Heller brought up are on my list of notes. So I, I'm encouraged by that. Working through the effort to understand and respond to this item and its complexities with three days of notice as a citizen has been a challenge. But I didn't feel that I could just let the meeting go by and wait until another date because the action requested in your minutes meant that this was going to move on and on and on fairly quickly. So I, here I am at 81 today with three days' notice to address this item. There are four issues that have emerged and I will be brief with regard to the, some of the ones that Mr. Heller has identified. The memo to the board on this issue from the township manager references operational and potential legal challenges with the current board member agenda request procedures that were enacted in the 2025-2 resolution. And it has already been mentioned that that was enacted under the current watch administratively by both the manager and our solicitor. The memo from the manager references one action. Mr. Patterson asked the manager to identify some other issues where this conflict is arising, and she did so. So I won't go through that because, but there was only one reference in the, in the memo. The second thing is I read the documents that are referenced by the manager, the Home Rule Charter, Resolution 2025-2, and the Township Procedural Manual. With reference to meeting agenda issues, I could only find the word "prepare" related to the manager's role. I could not find the word "control" when it referenced the agenda. There is clearly a difference between the meaning of "prepare" and "control." The Home Rule Charter clearly references "prepare" and does not use the word "control" at any point with regard to referencing the charter or the agenda. Clearly, the manager has the responsibility as the township's CEO to put before the board through an agenda all of those items necessary for the board approval and action. But that responsibility is not intended to be exclusive to the manager for agenda development. The exclusivity suggestion is an interpretation of the word "prepare" and not referenced in any of the government's documents, governing documents. I think Patty brought up the issue of the access of the taxpaying resident to the governance issues that might be in front of the board. We need to have an access portal for agenda items. And that access portal, while that limited, really does emphasize the role of the elected ward-related supervisors as our portal to governance issues here in the township. There has to be a way that the taxpaying resident can have their issues addressed, not just for you to hear them in the open mic environment of the beginning of the meeting where you don't respond, you just hear what they have to say, to a point where it gets on an agenda and you have the opportunity to be part of a discussion regarding the issue. There's a difference there. Being heard and having it on the agenda as a discussion item are two different things. If we don't have a clear path as a citizen to the, to the opportunity for presenting agenda items, what we end up with is legislation without representation. You create the legislation, we're not representing. And, and we, we can't have that. And I think that is more apt to get us into a legal challenge than the current ordinance or resolution. This isn't the first time that a charter has come up. And in fact, the last two meetings, the charter has come up as a reference document. Last meeting, we were talking about the Tax Review Board and its role and where the charter. This week, we're talking about agenda development and the charter discussion comes up again. Maybe it's time for the charter to be revisited. I'm going to propose to you something referencing what Mr. Heller has said. I propose the establishment of a Home Rule Charter ad hoc committee. Not just staff, a Home Rule Charter ad hoc committee charged with the task of review, remedy, and update of the Home Rule Charter. The final action of this process would be a township referendum that would capture all of those changes into an update. Rather than going through the business of picking one or having one and having a referendum to change and then another one and having a referendum to change, we, we could go on, you know, through voting cycles for some time because the charter is clear about the fact that you want to change it by referendum. Further, I propose that no action be taken on the replace, replacement, removal and replacement of Resolution 2025-2 at this time. I think that should stand. And I think that we should then embark on a effort to address the charter and the issues of management that staff through the different consulting efforts that they have had with, with updating our management system. We, so we can start to increase that.
I gave the rest of Kayla's time.
You what?
You should thank Ms. Coral for ending early. I gave you her time. Thank you. All right, so.
Yeah, so I just, again, it's not a comfortable conversation, but it's a necessary conversation. but it's a necessary conversation because the last couple of meetings, I have intentionally been bringing up alignment with the charter. Because it's a democracy, and I agree with all of the feedback that's been shared. But once we start straying away from our charter, the foundation of this principled organization, when does it stop? I've looked at historical records. There is a great deal of interpretation and action that doesn't always connect the dots in present time. And I say that carefully. When I say doesn't connect the dots in present time. And that has led to a great deal of confusion. It's led to processes being constructed in ways that people would die on the sword and say, this is how it's always been. And then we have experts, auditors, come in and say, this needs changed. We've brought in financial, digital, or excuse me, financial forensic analysis to identify changes that needed to be corrected. You all know from exec sessions some real significant issues that have had to be addressed that unfortunately we can't share. And those changes have been made by this administration. And when we assess how we got here, ultimately, one can say it's a result of straying away from our Home Rule Charter. I'm absolutely in support of changing that charter. That is the integrity of Ferguson Township. And losing sight of that is what's led to a great deal of issues. Issues that this administration and this staff gets, gets, I'm going to say it, bullied and attacked for on social media as if we've done something wrong when we're doing some correction to change internal processes that have been resisted. And there's nothing that this administration has done without having a third party. You can call them consultants, or you can call them state analysts. They're all the same at this point. I have not made any changes, internal processes, that are not the reflection of strict compliance requirements. Some recommendations. This administration has taken on a great deal of a heavy burden that ultimately is a result of not upholding accountability measures, which in turn ends up creating a lack of fairness. This township received a land development revised phasing plan to come onto the agenda. Past the deadline, we could even legally adhere to the Sunshine Law, which is to require legal advertisement of action items on a board agenda. And this administration looks like we're not being friendly. But the reality of it is, we're just adhering to the Sunshine Law. And so I'm bringing up further examples because I recognize that a lot of the frustration is on this administration. And I got to tell you, you have wonderful staff. I've shared with you where I am. We are upholding your charter. If you want to change it, do that, but don't blur the lines. In this Resolution 2502, I've been doing it since I've been hired because that's what was put in place. And it's been three years, and I'm comfortable to say it doesn't work. And I'm not saying that it has to go through the manager. I'm not here much longer. But whatever you do, needs to be what your next manager is going to be held accountable to. And no one challenged my predecessors.
I would just.
When it comes to the agenda.
No, I disagree. That was put in place as a result of what was happening at the time, right?
Actually, thank you for that clarification. It was the result of a board member who wanted equal application for an opportunity to speak.
So that was challenging a manager, quite frankly.
But it was, and that was the beginning of a disalignment in this particular regard as it relates to the charter for agendas. That was the beginning of what got us here. And now I look like this manager that is this authoritarian, oh, she just wants to control. I'm just trying to shift us to the Home Rule Charter because I have seen firsthand in the last year or two how straying away from that has created some cultural issues, workplace cultural issues, and some confusion even on the side of onboarding. It has created a lot of issues. And I'm not saying there's not another middle ground between what Supervisor Heller is saying and what we currently have. I mean, there certainly, I'm sure, are 50 different ways that we could come up with. I'm just acknowledging it doesn't have to be repeal and do nothing except for go through your manager. It can be a different version. It can be a required meeting with the manager or the assistant manager. Or it can be an email to discuss it and then a meeting. It can be a number of things. I'm acknowledging, however, conflicting, continuously allowing lines to be blurred through a disalignment with the charter. It really disrupts the organizational stability. It doesn't create that consistent accountability measure that we've been upholding to try and shift the culture. And it positions a great deal of confusion. The answer may not be, it's, you know, change the charter or don't change the charter. It may not be completely repeal that section entirely. It could just be amend that section. But trying to align with the charter has to be a shared, you know, has to be the approach forward. Otherwise, democracy is a mess. If we don't align with the core principles of the document that says this is the law, the Home Rule Charter is the law, if you don't follow it, then everything's up for discretion by someone, any one of us. And so I would just plead with this Board that whatever we do, we align with the charter. And if you want to change the charter, change the charter. It's a long process, but we can do it. And I would agree with our last, you know, comment. It doesn't have to happen tonight, but I intentionally wanted this conversation to happen at the expense of knowing what it looks like for me. But the messaging I just shared was my purpose.
Thank you, comrade.
Did you call me comrade?
Mr. Heller here.
I appreciate open and honest dialogue and discussion. And Ms. Martin, I appreciate everything you've done in upholding the charter. And I'm looking for a process that holds us accountable to them. And if the charter doesn't do that, then it's something that we need to go ahead and address, be it through maybe a charter review board, whatever those things might be. I want to solve this so that somebody can say, hey, Matt, I brought this to you three times. What's going on here? I don't pass the buck. I'd rather say, yeah, I'm a mess up. I did something wrong. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have done this. I'm not going to say, oh, staff isn't doing this. No, hold me accountable through a charter. I'm good with that. I'm put in this role to be held accountable. So I really applaud this conversation because I think we can find a path forward. And what does that look like? I don't know. But let's figure it out.
And I appreciate that comment. And I appreciate, and I also want to acknowledge, you know, I know that you all are the ones that hear from your constituents a lot. We also, so to your point about, you know, honest dialogue and being able to move forward with all of that. Yes, and the charter does say that any citizen can bring forward a submission for a request. They can come to the podium, but the charter says the Board's not required nor shall really respond. Some people find that to be insulting when you don't respond, but it's following the charter. But if they write a submission to the township to request for dialogue seven days in advance, that is how any member of Ferguson Township can actually get an agenda item on. I mean, coming to you is great, but then you've got to go through this process that doesn't even align with the charter. Why not just say, that's a great point. Email the township. Here's section, you know, in the charter, I think it's 202. And I only know that because when I stepped into this role my first year, we did announcements trying to help folks learn, hey, when you want to bring something to the Board, this is how you do it. And I think that following that charter as opposed to necessarily you feeling like you have to figure it out for them because then what ends up happening is members of the Board, you bring that to me. So while I'm drafting agendas and negotiating and doing these other things, then I'm also looking to figure out how we remove something off of the roadway because one of your constituents brought it. But it would be really helpful if we could direct them to the staff who, you know, are the ones who can get whatever needs removed off the roadway because that is really their job. And when they have a policy item, please encourage them to write to the township seven days. Copy you on it. That way, that's your accountability. Like Resident A says they want to talk about this. They're emailing the township. They're going to get it on the agenda. And they've copied their ward representative. And now everybody's transparent and held accountable in alignment with the charter. That, I appreciate what you've said, Supervisor Heller, and I don't disagree. But figuring out ways that uphold the charter, that is ultimately all I'm asking for.
Great. Ms. Franklin.
I'll just go back a little bit. Thank you. And I didn't want to reiterate what you just said. When you first came on board, that first year, there was a lot of kind of promotion of the citizen's right to be heard. And I believe that that, the intent when the board member item was introduced, that it was introduced with the idea that the board member would bring it as the citizen would bring it. They would bring a matter for discussion, and the Board would hear the point. And I'll use the beekeeping that we did here. So somebody wanted to bring up beekeeping. So the board member would submit that, say, let's have a discussion. They would present what they had. They would not go to staff and say, can you compile a list of the other townships that have a beekeeping ordinance? They would bring whatever they wanted to bring, that or not. And they would lead a discussion on that item with the other board members. And the other board members would say either, you know, thanks, we're not interested in pursuing this further, or you have a great point. Let's, you know, put this in the queue for where we can fit it in our work plan, you know? We think the Planning Commission should look at this beekeeping thing. Okay, well, let's ask the manager to, you know, consult with zoning director and see where they could fit this. So it was a very deliberate process. It wasn't, you know, I have an idea and let's get everybody to, you know, put everything together. And I don't know if anybody's done this. I'm not, you know, chair of ice here, so I don't know if that's what's happening. But, you know, it was just bring an item for discussion that you don't see coming up. And so you want to bring it up and see if it, maybe it doesn't fit in the rest of this year. Maybe it's something that gets put in for discussion Q1 next year. But it was just a way to bring something up, just like the citizen's right to be heard. So, you know, I think part of, when I read this, what I was interpreting as a great part of the problem was if there's some direction to staff to prepare an item. And maybe I read that wrong, so not just to bring something for discussion. And again, like I said, it was much more of a collaborative thing. Like, oh, you know what? We're going to be doing something with, you know, birdkeeping. So we'll talk about the, you know, whatever, you know? It was much more collaborative. So I don't know if that's what's happened here or if it's just that, you know, staff has been deluged with work requests to prepare a board member request because that just was not the intent. And so, like I said earlier, I really came into this thinking, you know, we'll talk about how to work on refining the process and make it so that everybody understands where we're at and not get rid of it and not, you know, make it totally inaccessible because that was not the idea. And so it's, that was how I interpreted the agenda item as placed on tonight's agenda. And so I would like to bring it back to, you know, to walk through what the policy is and, you know, see how we can better refine it. Because I, like I said, I think it probably does need refining. I'm not really prepared to vote on something tonight. And I don't think based on our discussion tonight, I'm not sure we're in that place.
I would agree.
All right. So there's, it sounds like, Mr. Thompson, anything?
Good discussion and a lot of reflection. I would be in favor of bringing this forward to another meeting, so.
All right. Bring it forward to another meeting.
Not during budget season. No, I'm talking like first quarter, you know? Come back to this.
Here's the collaborative piece.
There's an issue. Let's resolve it.
Very fair, comrade Heller.
Stuck you.
All right. So we'll now move on to communications to the Board. Ms. Stevens.
The only communication that I have had to bring to staff attention is that there was some concern about the traffic light at the corner of Atherton and Aaron Drive. If you're trying to make a left-hand turn into our neighborhood, people seem to think that that left turn arrow is not working. But I don't know. I'm not a driver.
Thank you.
I'm just, this is what people have brought to my attention, that it's not working.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to end on a very positive note. And a resident in Ward One let me know how much they appreciate the snow plowing that is done on their street, which is up a hill, and the leaf collection that's going on because there are a bunch of trees in that neighborhood that cause a lot of problems. So a big shout out to the crews that manage those, really. And I'm happy to put that in writing and so it can be disseminated or whatever. But it was very much appreciated hearing this. It was unsolicited. It was just that, hey, let them know.
That's great.
Thank you.
Ms. Franklin. All right. Calendar items are as written. Feel free to, a couple of days of office being closed.
Oh, Thanksgiving? What's that? That's right. It's this month.
We give thanks.
This month.
And we're on item 10.
That a motion to adjourn?
That it is.
So.
And I'll second. We're adjourned. Thank you all.